Welcome to the Lompoke City Council Meeting, all one of you. And thank you for coming, Ray, because we've been lonely with no one. And could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Martner. Councilmember Costa, present. Councilmember Lingle.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor John Lynn.
Here. And now, oral communications. Ray, do you have anything to say? No. Okay. Since we have no oral communications, we will move to closed session, which, contrary to the agenda, will be in the break room. And our business item will be, at long last, we will actually get to our public employee performance evaluation for the city administrator. See you at 7:00. Hello and welcome back to your city council meeting. We had our employee evaluation for our city administrator, and we have successfully completed that. So, good things there. And now, Brother Bill, where are you? There you are. Bill Denton from the First Christian Church for our invocation. If you'd please rise.
Eternal Spirit, we call you by different names, depending upon our backgrounds and traditions, but we know that it is through your creative ingenuity and power that all things have come into existence. We thank you for the magnificence and the glory of your creation, and at this time, we thank you especially for this lovely valley in which we are privileged to reside. We pray now, as the members of our city council come to deal with varieties of issues, some routine and relatively trivial, some of far more profound significance, that we pray that in all of it, they might be responsive to your gracious concern and to your leading. This we pray for you in whatever be the holy name by which we know you. Amen.
Amen. May I join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Wednesday, November 14th, it was my pleasure to attend a ceremony at the Scottish Rite Temple in Santa Barbara and make a presentation of a proclamation to J.C. Knapp, who has awarded their Patriot of the Year and has been involved in so many, many things here, serving in multiple capacities, from a wrestling coach to a Boy Scout leader to I don't even know how many things. He's the guy that always says yes. And then, presentations.
We could have Harry Height and Rudy come up here. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, citizens of Lompoke. The Lompoke Police Department, for the past 11 years, has been sponsoring and putting on a car show in our city that each year grows better, more public support, community support, and the cars get better and better every year. And this past year, we were able to raise a total of $20,000 from the car show event itself to be able to donate to the North County Special Olympics. And that's, Rudy is here, as a representative of the North County Special Olympics. More importantly, though, over the course of these 11 years, we've been able to raise a total of $260,000 that goes directly back to our young people in Special Olympics. And so, these people, members of our community, are able to go down to Long Beach, go to Santa Maria, different places where we have competitions, and they are able to compete. We're able to provide them the funding for the activities that they do, and we're very proud, again, this year, to be able to present a check for $20,000 to the Special Olympics for North County.
Congratulations.
This also couldn't be possible without the support of our community, but also, the Foursquare Church, Pastor Bernie Fetterman, is a huge supporter for our car show. He brings out hundreds of his members of his church every year to help us make that happen. And also, the Home Depot, they are a huge supporter. If you've been out to the car show, you see the kids building all kinds of things that are out there. And then, there's many other organizations and businesses in Lompoke. So, thank you for all the support that we get from you, and we'll be continuing with the car show in the future.
I just want to, on behalf of the Special Olympics Northern Santa Barbara County, I want to thank Chief Ralston and especially Harry for continuing to, you know, keep the, we call it the flame of hope. They're part of what we call Law Enforcement Torturing as well, who provides a majority of the funding for Special Olympics Northern Santa Barbara County. I think Santa Barbara County alone, with Lompoke and Santa Maria and Santa Barbara, they raised over $96,000 alone last year in 2011. So, without their support, you know, we couldn't offer things like going on trips to, you know, we're going to fall games in Fountain Valley here on December 7th and 8th. And everything we offer is free. So, and we couldn't have done it without the support of the Lompoke Parks and Rec Department, the city of Lompoke. You know, you guys have been great to us, and we appreciate everything you do. Thank you very much.
Harry Height, come back.
I tried to escape.
This would not be complete without recognizing Harry, who is the heart and soul of this and brings everything together and makes it all happen. And personally, I want to thank you on behalf of all of the citizens of Lompoke for the amazing job that you have done. Thank you so very much, Harry.
Thank you, Mayor. Really, it's a great thing. We get a lot of help from every business in town and all the people that help out, the church, and we appreciate the help from the city to put on the cruise the night before, and hopefully, we can keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to next year. And just for those of you watching at home, so you will know, I'm going to change the order of the agenda a little bit. We have a request at the end of the agenda for the Charlotte's Web bus proposal, and I will be taking, that's item 13, and I will be taking it after the consent calendar, before, between items nine and 10. So, if you're sitting at home, waiting to come down and talk about that, come on down. And next, the city administrators' report.
Honorable Mayor, council members, and audience, at a recent council meeting, you asked that I provide for your review and discussion a list of outstanding council requests. Thus, thank you for this opportunity to provide you this list tonight. In consideration of a long agenda, I recommend that I first show the slide reflecting current outstanding requests, and then have you review the list of six priorities adopted by council in 2011. And then, I'll go back to the list of outstanding council request items for your discussion. And to provide clarification, I would first explain council's policy for council requests. In 2010, council adopted the policy that council requests are only those made by one member during a council meeting, which is then concurred by at least two other council members. During the council meeting, council may either request the item be agendized for a date certain or request that staff agendize the matter for a future council date. And to provide statistics, requests made by council since 2010 total 157, of which 115 were completed, 27 are ongoing policy matters, and 15 remain outstanding. Total of 46 new requests were made during council calendar year 2012, of which 33 were completed, five are ongoing, and eight requests are included on the list of 15 outstanding This slide reflects all the current outstanding council requests for council's review and discussion tonight. I'd like to point out that department staff are working on council request items four and five, which will be on a future council agenda early 2013. And items 10, 12, 13, and 15 are scheduled on dates certain future council agendas. And as directed by council, item six, the city policy for financial reporting and monitoring of nonprofit organizations, will follow the consultant's report on LHCDC housing loans, which is on tonight's council agenda. And as I understand, request item 11 regarding scheduling a workshop to discuss low-income housing is a follow-up request to item nine on the list. So, this slide outlines the six council policies that you adopted in 2011, and staff recommends council review the list of outstanding council requests. Keep it in mind, these six priorities. So, I'll go back to, okay, the outstanding council requests, and you can review and discuss and give direction as deemed necessary.
Are there any, looking at the council priority on this outstanding request list, are there any that we need to change the priority code in the right-hand column? Councilmember Lingle.
Just a quick question. City Administrator, would you, again, let me know which ones have a date certain right And if possible, the date.
So, items, if you look at the chart, items 10, 12, 13, 15, those four items will be agendized for council meetings on January 15th.
Okay.
Item 12, report on safe and sane fireworks, city limits, has been reviewed by the Public Safety Commission and will be on the December 18th.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's start back. Item 10, which is the discussion on requesting upgrade funding for pedestrian walkway with Caltrans for the Highway 246 bridge, will be on the agenda of January 15th. Item 12, report on safe and sane fireworks and city limits, was reviewed by the Public Safety Commission and will be on your agenda for December 18th. Item 13, review of city's participation in county urban consortium, is to be agendized for the meeting of January 15th. And, let's see. Item 15, discussion on stabilizing Lompoke theater roofing, will be on the December 4th agenda.
Thank you.
Yeah, one item that I noticed is missing on here is the Single Purpose Committee for Review and End Use of the Old Pool.
Councilmember Starbuck, the reason why it's not reflected on outstanding is because we did take it to council for the establishment of the Single Purpose Committee and the appointment of the members. What is outstanding is starting to actually get underway. There was one member that was not appointed, so there were four members appointed to that special purpose committee. And with new council seated, it would be appropriate to have that member appointed and then move forward.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. City Administrator, I know you and I spoke about this previously, and it seems to me that there must be some confusion in regards to what council's priority is, and that is in regards to the city website. It's something that we've discussed in the past. And so, actually, this evening, I thought it was an outstanding request, but it's not included on here. So, I would like, tonight, to have the city council create, or I can create a motion to agendize discussion of the city website or what the next step needs to be. I know some work has been done in the Community Development Department with Ms. Galavan, but seeing as it is not an official request, it does not then have the weight of an official request like I would like it to have. So, if that's needed, I would like a second and a third for that.
Yeah, I'd be happy, I'd be happy to be whatever number. Okay, we got five. And I think that actually is, I think we took the first step and we updated the website, but this is the next step of, after that.
We didn't have the expertise in-house to do what needs to be done, and I think I said that in a public session. So, I, yeah, definitely taking the next step. Thank you guys for your support.
And so, just for clarification, this is to move forward and improve the city's website as it's related to the economic development component.
I think what she's looking for is just a review at large. Maybe you could sit down with city administrator and kind of, because you're the, you were the lead on this before. That'd be okay?
Okay.
Okay, good. All right. Seeing no other lights, we'll move on to the next item, and that will be staff requests and announcements. Anything else? No? Okay. Oral communications, five minutes for you to talk to us about anything if you can't stay for your item or if you want to talk to us about something different.
Good evening. I'm Pat Brady from Good Samaritan here in Lompoke, and I want to talk to you about something different. Last Friday night, out here in the parking lot, we had KCOY-sponsored turkey drive. And Good Samaritan was the beneficiary of this. It was the first time in Lompoke. We have a lot to learn, but...
Lights.
It was cold, it was rainy, we needed chairs, we needed lights. But, I still think it was a success. And I wanted to come here to thank the city for all of their help, specifically Chief Ralston and his awesome explorers. They were terrific. They really helped a lot. Theresa Galvan and some of her staff, Chanel and Trish, were great. They stood out there. Even Councilman Lingle came by with a turkey. It was a success in that we got the word out, we got people to come by. We didn't collect a lot of turkeys, but we did have enough bounty to share with Victory Outreach, with the Food Pantry, and with New Life Christian. So, we felt good about that. Also have to thank the Police Officers Association for their generous monetary contribution. It was great. The citizens of Lompoke, who didn't know anything about it, but who came back around with turkeys or other products, was wonderful. So, we thank you from the bottom of our heart. We appreciate the use of your parking lot. And also, I want to mention, let me think, Randy McIntosh, and he is allowing us to use his refrigerated truck to keep those turkeys frozen. So, a lot of people are having turkey dinner on Thursday that wouldn't have otherwise. So, thank you very much.
Pat, I have to tell you, it's a real brief story, but it's a wonderful story. I was in here at a meeting at City Hall, and I think the drives from 2:00 to 4:00?
It was 3:00 to 6:00.
3:00 to 6:00, okay. I walked out of the meeting in City Hall, saw them standing there feeling really guilty because I had not, so I says, "Okay, I still have time to rush over to Von's, get the turkey before you're done." So, I rushed over to Von's, go back to the frozen food section, they've got this wonderful display of turkey. Turkey's $10 for club members. Well, we're club members, so I grabbed the turkey, quick rush stop, now it's about 15 minutes till 6:00 before they close and, or before you're done. And, flop it down the cashier, wait in line, flop down the cashiers, and he says, "You realize you're not going to get that for $10?" And I says, "Well, I'm a club member." He says, "Well, it's with a purchase of $25 worth of food." Okay, so, I don't have time to do, I says, "Okay, just go ahead and ring me up." The woman behind me, this is where giving and sharing, it spreads. She says, "Oh, this just isn't right." She says, "I have to be able to help in some way. Tell me what I can do." So, I'm looking, and she, I can tell she's got more than $25 worth of food. So, I turned to the cashier, I says, "Can I add this to hers?" And he looks around, he says, "Well, why not?" So, we just add it to hers, I gave her the $10. She was able to help with the drive as well, and it was just the spirit of giving. It just, it just spreads like that.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Andrew Jay, citizen of Lompoke. I too stood out in the rain Friday. Thank you, Councilmember Lingle. It was very cold, had to take a really hot shower when we got home, but I wanted to thank the community for pitching in. It was a really lovely thing. I'm here tonight to give my thanks and appreciation to Cecilia Martner. I won't be at the next, won't be able to be at the next meeting, and to me, this is the last meeting you'll be at. And I know from personal experience, it's a thankless job, it's hard work, and four years, it seems like a very long time. And I wanted to thank you, Cecilia, for being the voice on the council, who asked the questions and stuck to her guns and is leaving with her integrity intact. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all your hard work. I worked with Cecilia for two years, and we went through a lot with Councilmember Lingle also. We had a lot of things happen to us and to the city in those two years, but it was a joy just to work with you at that time, Cecilia, and I wanted to thank you very much. And I think this community owes you a very big debt of gratitude.
Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communication, and we'll come back to council for the consent calendar. This evening, on the consent calendar, we have approval of the minutes of 11:06. We have approval of expenditures, payroll of $1,051,000, a voucher registered for $679,000, a voucher registered for $376,000, and credit refunds for $1,985. So, if you've been waiting for one, here it comes. Item number three, extra work locations for project number FY12S1, the 2012 street rehabilitation project. And this involves piggybacking onto that project for some paving work at other city areas with funds that were previously allocated, but we can do it less expensively by putting it together with this project. Item number four, the final acceptance of project number FY07S2, the five years in the making U Street San Megalito Channel pedestrian bridge, which had an authorization of up to $24,400 in change orders, but only used $5,300. And number five, the adoption of resolution 5812, Parents 12, to approve amendment number one to the unrepresented UR compensation plan and amend number one to the management supervisor confidential MS and C compensation plan. And this is a decision that the council made to assist city employees in all categories with a forthcoming increase in their medical costs. Number six, adopt resolution 5813-sub-12 to approve amendment two to the memorandum of understanding between the city of Lompoke and the Lompoke Employees Association, LEA, formerly represented by the California Teamsters Union Local 381. Item seven, adopt resolution 5814-12 to approve amendment one to the memorandum of understanding between the city of Lompoke and the Lompoke City Firefighters International Association of Firefighters Local 1906. And item number eight, the award of a contract for aviation and jet fuels for approximately $289,000. This is an open bid contract to supply the jet fuel to the airport, and it's based on a markup on a, on a market price from an index in Los Angeles. And number nine, the award of a contract for card lock fuels for approximately $953,000 for all city vehicles, the largest user being the transit district. There were two bidders for that. The successful bidder met all criteria, and that was JB Dewar of San Luis Obispo with their facility on Laurel Avenue. And are there any items that council member would like to withdraw from this list, or ask a question? Councilmember Starbuck.
Real quick, Mr. Ramble, I have a question on item nine here, the card lock fuels. The question is pretty simple. This is an annual budget for fuel for the city, but what I'm curious about is, we obviously know pretty much what we use in gallons per year, but I'm wondering what we computed this cost at per gallon? Are we buffeting this enough in case we have a pretty big spike in fuel later, or how are we managing that?
Good evening. Thank you for the question. The price is based on the market prices that changes in Los Angeles, so there's a markup above that. It's independent of what's actually budgeted. They, Brad Wilkie in the budget sets aside money for fuel, and it's divided amongst the departments. It's above my pay grade to know exactly how that's done, but that's set aside. But, the prices are just established as a formula above the markup, above the market price in Los Angeles. And so, it's not clear that we've set aside enough, but this is an estimate based on current market prices and what we expect to use.
And I think Brad...
So, this is the current market price, then? Is that what we're basing this contract on?
No, I think it's an ongoing average, isn't it, Brad? Seems to me. Come up and...
I mean, if everything goes bad in the Middle East and gas goes to $6, does this cover us for a year in this?
No. It establishes the price we would pay.
It establishes the amount that we pay that is our incremental cost, and then, the amount above that is based on a weekly index that's published through the, published weekly. Almost, except for the transit component, all the rest of the fuel is purchased through the Internal Service Fund, the fleet fund. That fund is budgeted with the majority of those monies. If fuel were to spike during this two-year budget cycle, in the next two-year budget cycle, we will take that into account to revise the amounts that all the individual departments would be paying for their services for fleet. So, in effect, the departments, the using departments are protected from any kind of price increases for the two-year period that we're in. And if there's any fluctuation that goes out of bounds from that, in the next two-year budget cycle, we would be able to take that into account for that budget cycle, effectively repaying the fleet fund in the following two years. And that protects the budget for the majority of the departments, so they see a flat cost, whether the prices go up or down.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I accept a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved?
And a second. And is there any further discussion on the consent calendar? And could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Thank you. And now, we'll move to item number 13, is it? 13, the completion of the Charlotte's Web Children's Library Project.
Hello, Mayor, city council, citizens of Lompoke. I first would like to thank you for moving this item up on the agenda. Very appreciated by me and the many people who are here tonight in support of... Very appreciated by me and the many people who are here tonight in support of this project. So I'd like to provide a brief presentation for you that just goes over some of the highlights of this project. And I have a quote on this, this first page here that I'd like you to keep in mind as we go through this. It's from Laura Bush, and it reads, "Libraries allow children to ask questions about the world and find the answers. And the wonderful thing is that once a child learns to use a library, the doors to learning are always open." Okay, so in this presentation, I'd like to cover the concept of what a bookmobile is and what we'd be able to do with something like this, the future possibilities that we'd like to explore, the fiscal impact of that, which would include an estimated cost of the bookmobile project, our current project revenue, the annual cost to operate the bookmobile, and the funding status of the Benton Trust. And then at the very end, I'll just review the recommendation. Okay, so here in this picture is what we would call a step van type of bookmobile. And there are many different kinds of bookmobiles that, that are available to libraries. This is one that we think would probably meet the needs of the community of Lompoc. It would hold approximately 2,000 to 4,000 books and/or materials. It would also have technology available to the people who are using it, including Wi-Fi, computers with internet access, printing, gaming machines, and other technology as, as time goes on. The bookmobile would be able to travel the city limits of Lompoc to reach children of various neighborhoods. And as you all know, with Charlotte Benton's property was on the south side of Lompoc, and it was her intention to reach that, the children in that area. So this is something that would be able to actually reach that demographic and provide library services to those, those children. It would also be a completely energy-efficient green vehicle, so it could have low-energy LED lighting systems, alternative fuel capabilities, minimized exhaust emissions, solar panels, and ADA accessibility. So some of the future possibilities we would have if a bookmobile project was approved and we were able to move forward is it allows for community collaboration. That means, these are the kinds of places that the bookmobile could actually go to and not only be, have the materials and whatnot is on the bookmobile available to it, but then also these places would have the expertise of our staff, so they could go there and do programming, such as storytimes and any other, you know, manner of programming that we have going on at the time. So a couple of the organizations we've identified that we'd like to collaborate with would include the Boys and Girls Club, daycare centers, the YMCA, Dorothy Jackson Family Resource Center, and most importantly, the Lompoc Unified School District. As you know, the schools in libraries are being cut drastically, hours reduced, staffing is lost. So this is an opportunity for us to supplement the school services, the library services at schools to the children there. And it would also help raise awareness of the Lompoc library services within the community. So just the bus by itself, driving around, having these things available would help, you know, sort of raise that awareness. And the picture I have here actually is inside of a bookmobile, so this is kind of the setup of what it would like, look like. Children, it would actually be able to go up and check out materials. A staff member's there and is able to do everything you would in a normal library, get a library card, put a book on hold, get help with your homework, anything of that nature. Okay, another possibility that we would strongly like to explore with this is developing the site at 211 South I Street. It could become a primary stop on the vehicle's weekly route. The site could be improved as far as funding is available to include a driveway and pad for the vehicle to park, sidewalks, parking that could be utilized by city residents, possibly something like a drought-tolerant garden, and potentially even something like restrooms. Improvements like this would enable the library to actually have programming on-site. So for example, during our summer reading programs, we have so many people that we actually cannot let them all attend the program. We have to give out tickets. And once we hit 200 people, we don't have room for it anymore. And, you know, unfortunately, we actually do hit that limit almost every time. So something like this would allow us to have a satellite site for programming available. Something, doing something like that is why restrooms is kind of necessary. You have a lot of young children, so you're going to need a bathroom if they're there for a couple hours. So not only would it do that, but it would also enhance the downtown area for local residents and visitors. So an example, a perfect time for the library to stop if this area would be on Saturdays during the swap meet. There's a lot of foot traffic, and children who are just out and about with their parents might be able to stop by and use the services of the bookmobile. I should mention, the costs for site enhancement have not yet been determined. That's because what we want to focus on right now is the cost of the bookmobile and making sure we have the, the funding available to do that. Then when we finish that, we can see what we have left to develop the site. But it really is something that we would very much like to make happen. It would really honor Charlotte's vision. Okay, there was a special meeting of the Library Board of Trustees on September 13, 2012. It was to provide a public update regarding the status of the Charlotte's Web Library Project and also to receive input regarding options for completion of the project. There were several options that were presented to the public. One was basically wait and see if the economy gets better. It's really not a viable option because the Benton Trustees have stated in the past that they would like to see significant progress very quickly by 2013. So that really was not an option for us to consider. A second option was a donated prefabricated building from a company called Project Frog. And if, it's all included in the staff report, but as you can see, with that option, there was still a very considerable funding gap that would still be very hard to overcome. And the third option was the bookmobile. Fourth option was, somebody has a great idea and tell us it. So at the meeting, the Benton Trustees and many others from the community voiced their support for the bookmobile option to complete the Charlotte's Web Library Project. The Benton Trustees also stated that they favored upgrading the 211 South I property so it could serve as a primary location for the bookmobile's weekly route. So there was probably, I'd say, about 60 people at the meeting, the special meeting. And I would say that the support for the bookmobile was actually quite overwhelming. Councilmember Lingle attended, and I'm sure he could attest to that. So it, it really kind of showed to us that this was probably the path forward. And at the October 9, 2012, meeting of the Board of Trustees, the board did vote to recommend this to City Council to approve the bookmobile option so that we could begin moving forward on this project. Okay, so here are the estimated costs of what the bookmobile would be. So first and foremost would be the vehicle purchase of the bookmobile. As I mentioned, it would probably be something like a step van-type vehicle. This one here in the picture is from Mountain View Library. Believe it or not, Google actually donated the money to keep that, to do that and keep it going and is very well-used in that community. This type of vehicle could be completed within one year. The life, typical lifespan is 12 to 17 years. And just so you get an idea of the overall size, it'd be about 25 to 30 feet in overall length. And the cost of that is approximately $250,000. Okay, so next would be a consultant at the cost of $15,000. As you can imagine, creating a custom bookmobile and going through that entire project is somewhat intensive, so having an expert on hand is invaluable. We've identified the Specialty Vehicle Services, which is a firm that provides independent specialty vehicle-centered consulting services specifically to public libraries. Basically, this is what they do. Last would, or next would be the furnishings, books and materials, equipment such as computers, all those necessary things, the technology. And that would be approximately $90,000. And here's a picture, which just has a partial view of a, inside of a bookmobile that's about the same size. And you can see that they can actually hold quite a bit of materials in there, and they can also still hold about 12 to 14 people at any one time. Okay, the last impact of the, of cost to actually making this happen is a secure place to store the bookmobile when it is not being used. We did explore some options, such as the corporate yard or the water treatment plant, but they were really not found as satisfactory locations for the storage of this. So what we're currently exploring is the idea of storing the vehicle on library property and creating a either secure enclosed garage or a secure carport-type area. So the cost estimates for both options are still being developed. You'll see in a graph we'll have in just a second. We're hoping to keep that on around or below $100,000. Okay, so here's the graph I just mentioned. At the top, I have the totals of the, all the amounts I just went through with you regarding the cost of the bookmobile project. And you can see right here, it's about $455,500 and $500. And below that, I have the current project revenue. So that includes the city fund helds from the Benton Trust and the Library Foundation, development impact fees, and the funds that have been held, that are held at the Library Foundation. So that secured revenue is $569,000. So the ideal thing with this project is, we can afford it. We can actually do this and make it happen. There's also some CDBG funds that are reserved, not allocated, of $250,000. This is the kind of thing we would be hoping would be able to go to site improvement of the 211 South I Street. And that brings the grand total of the project revenue to $819,000. Okay, so as I mentioned, available revenue above the estimated cost of the bookmobile could be used to improve the site at 211 South I Street, to ensure that it's included in project development. And here's an estimate of the annual cost to operate the bookmobile. I'm sure you all know this, but it really can't be stressed enough. The Benton Trust will fund all costs related to operation of the bookmobile. So there is no cost to the City of Lompoc for the provision of services, operation of a vehicle, or maintenance of an enhanced site at the 211 South I Street. So you can see here is the preliminary estimate to operate the bookmobile. We're guessing right around $127,000 a year. Obviously, that is very preliminary, but based on our research and discussions with other libraries, that's about what we can expect. Below, I have the funding status of the Benton Trust. And beyond those numbers you have there, I won't go into too many details, but I do know members of the Benton Trust are here tonight if you have questions regarding the funding. So it is recommended by the Library Board of Trustees to the City Council to, one, approve the purchase of a bookmobile to complete the Charlotte's Web Children's Library Project, and direct staff to rescind the 2006 memorandum between the City of Lompoc Benton Trustees and the Lompoc District Libraries Foundation, and direct staff to facilitate a new agreement between these parties in order to complete the project. Now, the reason we need to rescind the MOU and facilitate a new agreement is because the current MOU among the parties, as I have bolded here, says, "The construction and operation of a brick-and-mortar facility." And as you can see here, in the second paragraph, the MOU should be rescinded by all parties so that it can be developed to, basically, instead of saying a bookmobile, or instead of saying a brick-and-mortar facility, could actually state a bookmobile. Yeah, there's some other things in there, too. It's all provided in the staff report. So I hope that has answered most of your questions. And, you know, if there's anything else I can further answer for you, please let me know. I know there's a few speakers here tonight, too, who would like to, you know, say a few things to you.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I have a few questions. My first is, in regards to the storage, did you look into potential use or some kind of agreement with the school district where they keep their bus terminal?
We have not. Basically, this is very preliminary right now, so we are exploring all options, and that is something we can most certainly look into.
Because for me, if we could save the $100,000 for securing a building to house the vehicle, that could go into a purchase of a larger vehicle. So, you know, you'd have $350,000 as opposed to $250,000, you know, a larger bus that can hold more books, can service more children. That's the way I think about it. So that was my one question about that. And then I have another question for staff in regards to the CDBG funds. What is the status of those funds right now?
Those funds are still there, so we can work together on how that can be utilized.
And does that have to go through a competitive process?
Those were previously allocated.
Okay, so for me, my hope would be that we can get that on the agenda relatively soon, assuming that this is approved tonight. So actually, the site improvements can happen simultaneously with the purchase of the vehicle and, and that year-long process it may take to prepare that vehicle. You know, because for me, that, you know, is sort of a no-brainer. So that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Lingle.
Actually, Councilmember Costa stole my thunder, but also I wanted to congratulate you on your new position.
Thank you.
You're fitting right in, so congratulations.
Appreciate that.
All right, let's have the folks you'd like to have speak.
Pam Wall, local resident. I just have a question about the, the bookmobile. What the hours would be? Is that 40 hours a week or, or how would that be operated?
I couldn't say to the actual schedule yet. Like I said, this is still very preliminary, since we're really just now starting to explore the idea and waiting for approval before we move forward. But what I can say is that the cost of the bookmobile included in that operating cost is a full-time librarian and a part-time driver. So with a full-time librarian, it's very likely we could do something close to, you know, say 30 hours or so a week of various stops, depending on, you know, a lot of this will change based on community input, how it's received, how, where it's popular, and based on the, like I mentioned, the community collaboration, kind of how that's taken and what sites would like us and that sort of thing. So I think it can be very flexible, but as much as possible with a, with a full-time librarian staffing it. I hope that answers your question.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Jane Dewise, and I'm a resident of Lompoc. I was on the committee that was hoping to raise the additional funds for Charlotte's Web when we realized that the bottom fell out of the funding and the grant process. And it was a tremendous disappointment because we had hoped at that time to get things moving, excuse me. So when I began to hear and to read and talk to Ashley about the bookmobile, it, it just seemed like such an incredibly creative idea to bring to Lompoc to replace Charlotte's Web. And having been a teacher in Lompoc Unified School District for over 20 years, and seeing that one of the greatest needs in our school district and in our young children is to get books and materials in their homes. And so many of the young mothers that we have do not have access to transportation to get to the libraries. Dad goes to work, and there goes the one and only family car, especially in our lower-income areas. So you have families who do not have access to materials. And they need access to materials before they go to school in order to be ready to learn to read. It's researched, it's proven, we see it all of the time in our classrooms. Those students who have been read to, who know how to turn the pages and follow the text in a book, they can read. The other students struggle. So the idea that we could have this beautiful, bright, exciting, big trailer, drive down the street and park on my street and open the doors, and I can walk in, and I can check out books, I can see this as being such an exciting program for our very young people in town. And to take it not only to the schools, but to the Boys and Girls Club, to the other community areas throughout the week and throughout the day, I think it would be a, just, it's just, it makes me excited just to think about it. I, I did have an experience as a young child with a bookmobile in one of the small towns I lived in, and I was always awestruck when the bookmobile came and I could walk in. And I believe our children would feel the same way, to have access to computers that they don't have at home, to have access to books that they can take and check out. I think it's exciting, and I think it's a tremendously creative solution to the problem that we've had over the years with, how do we create a Charlotte's Web? And I think this would be a tremendous idea and compliment to her and to what she left the city. So, thank you.
My name is Martha Bakos, and I've lived in Lompoc for 30 years. I'm a great-grandmother. My children, my grandchildren were educated here now. One of my great-grandchildren is in school here, another one's getting ready. I think the bookmobile is a fabulous idea. And with the economy the way it is, I don't see that we're going to be able to suddenly develop the property that Mrs. Benton so beautifully left us. And I think that to go ahead with the bookmobile project would be an excellent idea for all of the obvious reasons. So. So please, please do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty Coggan, and I have, Lompoc, City of Lompoc, sorry. I've been on the Library Foundation Board for probably over 10 years, and this has been a monthly topic, and we've been over it and over it, and I think the Bookmobile is just the answer. And I can see it actually maybe as even a better solution than a brick-and-mortar building because it can get to children in other parts of the city that could not come to the South I Street location. And I think Charlotte would be proud of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Barbara Hold. I'm a citizen of Lompoc, also one of the Benton Trustees. I want you to realize that, you know, Charlotte was very innovative in her thinking and what she thought, and I'm sure if she was here today, she would approve this no end because it is open to everybody as far as that goes, not just the ones on the South I Street address. And I think the reason that both Reed and myself as the trustees are asking for, you know, the South I Street to have a pad to put it on for parking purposes, is that's part of her wish that her home could have been a location of a library. And I don't think she would have cared that much that it's on wheels or it's brick-and-mortar.
Excuse me, just a sec. Could you just, are you guys on the trustees okay with this as a concept? Is that what we're hearing you say?
Yeah, we're okay with it, and it came up, we were at that meeting, and it came up, somebody mentioned the fact, well, the city couldn't afford the gas, and we came forward at that time and said, even the gas, that's part of operation and maintenance. You know, that's, we're fine with that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm Rita Madden, and I'm the other trustee of the Charlotte Benton Trust, and I concur with everything that Barbara said, but I, too, want to add a thank you to the Library Foundation members, those who've been on it for 10 or 15 years, and then the current ones as well, because they really did try to come up with other solutions. And I don't know why we never thought of this before during this whole economic downturn because it's a wonderful solution. And when Barbara said it's innovative, we all know that Charlotte was innovative. She was, her and her electric cars, she'd be thrilled that we're going to be using energy-efficient Bookmobile. So I think this actually is something that she would have wholeheartedly approved of as we do. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm Anne Rouget. I'm president of the Lompoc Board of Trustees, and when this idea came up, and I don't remember who brought it up, but we're saying that's it. This is the way to have this project go forward after 15, almost 20 years. I was, you know, not here when they started it, but this is the way to go. And our new library director and our past library director have worked very hard to put this idea together, and we did explore all the options, and rather than sit and wait for the economy to improve, which is, who knows? And this, we have the money for it, and we just want to proceed. So I would ask you to give us the go-ahead with this, and we'll make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joyce Howerton, Lompoc, mayor, city council. I'd just like to add my voice to the other ones that you've heard tonight to support the idea of a Bookmobile. You know, I had the opportunity to spend quite a bit of time with Charlotte when she was developing this idea of donating her property to the city for a children's library. And all she talked about was how, when she was young, she was able to go to a library and feel safe, and her whole goal was that the children of Lompoc would have a safe place to go, where they could be educated, where they could socialize, and where they would feel safe. I don't know how or who came up with this idea, but I just want to commend the Library Foundation, the Charlotte Web's Committee, Molly, Ashley. This is brilliant, the idea of this Bookmobile, because unlike I Street, it can go everywhere in the community. And so Charlotte, all of you who knew Charlotte, knew that she was a woman out in the community, and I think if she was here today, she would be driving the Bookmobile because she, this to me is an idea that she would love, and right before she died, she was very concerned that this wouldn't go forward. And I have always felt that Charlotte is not at rest because she's waiting for this to happen. So tonight, if all of you are very, very quiet, you will hear her say, oh, just do it. And I think the Bookmobile is a wonderful idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last chance? Okay. Coming back to council. Are there any questions first before we go on to discussion? Anybody have a question for either the library staff or the Benton Trust? Okay. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. The reason I didn't say it earlier is because I thought it would sound awkward, but great job, Ashley. Sounds kind of weird. But I'm talking about Ashley Chavez, not myself. See, I told you, it just sounds awkward. I'm excited to see what you're going to do with the library, I think Molly, for all the hard work she's put in as well. You know, I do have to say, for me, the reason I was focusing on potentially securing a larger vehicle that had more accessibility and more items within it is because, you know, we do have to remember that, you know, we originally wanted an amazing facility that we're not going to get. I think that this is really fantastic, and it is a good solution, but for me, what I want to be sure that we're doing is making sure that we can get the biggest and best we can get for our community. So, that being said, staff, my question would be, the next step would be to amend the MOU or rescind and rewrite the MOU. Is that correct?
Yes.
Staff, yes, okay. And then upon the purchase of the vehicle, what is the steps that would need to be taken at that time?
That is when we would work with a consultant to determine all the right things that we need to do to make sure that we have the right Bookmobile, like you were saying, you know, a bigger one. Maybe when we talk to the consultant and they look at the needs of Lompoc, that's what they'll suggest. So that consultant is really going to help guide us through the process of the Bookmobile. Simultaneously, we'll want to be exploring, like I mentioned, the enclosure, so a secure area to store it, and then also potentially the site upgrade for the 211 South I Street. So all those things would be...
Will this come back to council before any, you know, money is spent on a vehicle?
You know, since I'm so new, I'm not quite sure what the process would be, but I would have to imagine that it would come back to council regarding the site. What I would like to point out is, even though the city is the owner of the property, that if it is not used for some library purpose, it does revert back to the Benton Trust.
Thank you.
Sure, go ahead. Who is next? I'm sorry. Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm glad you mentioned that the property would, if we don't use it, it would revert back to the Benton Trust. That's another important aspect. As Ms. Rouget pointed out, we have the money right now, but if we don't move forward, this all reverts back, the Benton Trust will, this gift to the city will literally disappear if we don't do something with it. So it's an important, I mean, the decision, that's an important thing that we have to make. Couple sort of comments or suggestions. As we decide the hours, first of all, I'm in favor of this project, and I'll be voting for it.
Thank you.
But as we, as you're looking forward to the hours, consider, since our current library is closed on Sundays, it would be nice if we have the Bookmobile open on Sundays for the entire community. That's one consideration. And then just a little comment. I was reading, I believe it was the Lompoc Record today, it may have been, but as I was reading, there's this tiny little article I'm thinking of right now, that's talking about the human brain and how the human brain is shrinking right now, and the inference to the shrinking of the human brain is because people are not reading anymore. We all have visual televisions and radios and everything else, but we're not having the impact of the physical reading of book. Whether that's true or not, that was the inference of the article. But, so I'm glad that we're going to keep libraries alive, at least during my lifetime for their children, but consider the Sundays.
Thank you, Councilmember Lingle, and I'd like to say that as library staff, we really appreciate and value all input from the citizens of Lompoc, the city council and mayor. You know, as we move, like I said, this project so far has been focused on what a Bookmobile could do, and we really haven't started exploring the actual specifics of it because we don't want to get ahead of ourselves before city council approval. But these are all really important points, and I think something that we will definitely look into as we move forward. So thank you for your input.
Councilmember Martner, founseled by Councilmember Starbuck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I came to this council four years ago, I became acquainted to the project, and I was really amazed to see the beautiful facility that it was being thought back four years ago. And I fought for it. I fought very strongly at one point in time as council, ex-council, former council member Rouget will remember, we were in the minority. We couldn't get the funding. We fought, and we fought, and we fought, and we finally ended up allocating our DA monies for it. Unfortunately, our DA monies disappeared. So that's kind of the story that I know about it. It was very disappointing to see that finally, when we did convince, when we thought that we reached an agreement with the council and the community to move forward this project, something else happened. When I heard about the Bookmobile, I was, I said, yeah, that's okay, but I, you know, I sort of felt, well, but that's so much smaller than what we wanted to do. So you have to readjust your judgment, you know, be aware of the present conditions, and the present conditions are is that it's virtually impossible to fund what the original project was. The Bookmobile I approve of particularly because it is accessible to everybody. And having heard testimony tonight, where there are families out there where there is only one car, and that car goes away from the city every day, those children don't have a place to go. But if that Bookmobile comes to their front door, that's a huge success. I mean, a huge success. So I'm in all favor for the project, I'm all in favor for purchasing the Bookmobile. Having said that, I have the question regarding the site. I think it is important to make sure that we preserve that site for what she wanted, to have some kind of library presence. And I would strongly encourage this council and the staff to work in parallel, to purchase the bus, but at the same time, to work aggressively in allocating funds so that site can be improved for a parking pad, but also for, you know, a place where people can go, and it's not just a vacant lot, which is what it is today. So thank you, everybody, for your efforts and your fight on this.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Real quick, Mr. Wookiee, I just had one question here. This project does meet all the requirements for the AB 1600. That money is allowed to go for this type of a project? Just yes or no?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Well, that sums it up to me as being what we would call a no-brainer then, and I can just visualize Charlotte's bouncing Bookmobile now with a little exhaust because they don't make electric Freightliners, but, yeah, I, thank you. I think it's a great project.
One last comment.
Okay.
Councilmember Martner made a good point that this property was the vision of Charlotte Benton for a library, and this doesn't mean, just because if we approve this vehicle this evening, this doesn't mean that sometime in the future, we don't have to build, or we could not build a library on that, on that site. The economy is depressed right now, but there's not, nothing that says it's not going to turn around. And when it does turn around, we can maybe start putting aside some money, and maybe someday in our lifetime, hopefully, that, well, you know, sometime, the property's not going to go away, the property's going to be there for a long time. So start planning for the future when we can build that, that dream of Charlotte. This is, this is going in the right direction, but we could possibly someday have a brick-and-mortar facility there.
Yeah, it'll come back. Well, from my standpoint, I think it's a great solution, but, you know, us guys like trucks, so that just works out good for us. A couple things just to throw in your thinking hat. We're going to have a compressed natural gas fueling station here at the school district, it looks like. There's an appeal filed that has to be dealt with, but that would reduce your fuel costs by about 45 percent, and I know that Freightliner International and all those guys have a C&amp;G chassis now. It also reduces maintenance costs, so just something to throw into the mix. If you wanted to put a restroom on site as part of some other research, I could give you information on, how would I describe it? Instant restroom. They deliver it, they set it down, and they connect, you connect it to water and sewer, and you're done. And those are fairly cost-effective and completely indestructible. A tree? A tree, yeah. Don't think that's good for the kids. But along that same line, one of the things that was successful in a downtown park we worked on was sponsorships for trees, bricks, benches, and all of those things, and you might find that you could probably put your whole park in just on the donations from it, and I'd be happy to share the paver, brick engraver guy with you also. And I certainly look forward to a big, bright graphic down the side of the bus that says, Charlotte's Web Mobile Library. And I know that, I sent an email to all you guys, that our folks at Cabrillo High School would just be falling all over themselves with an opportunity to design this, and we turn out the foremost graphic students in California high schools, so we'd sure love to have them have a crack at it. I think it's an outstanding solution, I really do, and I think for all the reasons that were discussed, not only will it honor what Charlotte would want, but it will expand that even beyond. And I agree, if she was here, she'd probably be driving the bus, but I don't think anybody else will get to. We can all sit in the driver's seat, and we'll get that far. So if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve. Did you have a question, Councilmember Costa?
Just going to make a comment and then make a motion?
Okay.
I'm really glad you brought up the C&amp;G station. That's part of the reason why I suggested having storage there, that would be convenient. And then, of course, the agreement could be that, you know, they get certain hours at certain schools and use of it, and that could potentially be worked out. So I would say definitely look into the school district for storage, and I just want to reemphasize, let's try to, you know, get the most out of the money we have in regards to purchase of a vehicle, so let's try really hard to limit our expenses elsewhere so we can get the best vehicle that we can pay for. That said, I would like to make a motion that the council approve the purchase of a Bookmobile to complete the Charlotte's Web Children's Library project, and direct staff to rescind the 2006 memorandum between the City of Lompoc Benton Trustees and Lompoc District Libraries Foundation, and direct staff to facilitate a new agreement between these parties in order to complete the project.
And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we vote? And that passes 5-0. Thank you very much, and we'll take a five-minute break. All right, we'll move on to item 10, a report from Urban Futures Incorporated regarding loans and monitoring of the projects with the City of Lompoc and the Lompoc Housing and Community Development Corporation, and presenting will be, to begin with, will be Teresa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, Teresa Galavan, Economic Development Director, Assistant City Administrator. This evening, we are here to review the report from Urban Futures, as the mayor said, regarding the loan. the loans and monitoring of projects with the City of Lompoc and LH CDC. In March, we entered into a contract with Urban Futures to complete the scope of services as outlined by council during a December council meeting. And we have been working on this report and sharing information and gathering information in order to get to this point today where they are here to present. And we recommend that you review their presentation and report. Discuss any questions about the report. Direct staff to utilize the information for the report from the report to develop a policy that will create greater accountability from organizations that are awarded funding from the City of Lompoc. Direct staff to implement an integrated monitoring system that will ensure all housing compliance monitoring is carried out. And authorize the city administrator to execute an amendment to the contract for consultant services to increase compensation by $5,150 for unbudgeted travel and $2,000, $3,150 for unbudgeted travel and $2,000 for the review and analysis of two additional properties. I'd like to go ahead and have Urban Futures present their report right now, and then we can proceed with any questions thereafter. Thank you. And I'd like to introduce Steve Duquette, Managing Principal from Urban Futures. Thank you, Steve.
All righty, thank you very much, Teresa. Again, my name is Steve Duquette, and I'm Managing Principal with the firm of Urban Futures Incorporated. And this evening, joining me is my colleague, Rayette Frazier. She's our Housing Compliance Manager, and she will actually be presenting a part of this report when we get to that particular part. I would like to point out that there were just a few, first of all, what you had before is a draft report. It's a draft for several reasons, not least of which is, we provided information and reported on it with comments and a narrative based upon matters of review that struck us, as important to say. In saying that, we can certainly appreciate that there may be other matters of record that, for reasons we wouldn't understand, but are important to the city, that maybe some further elaboration would be in order. With that in mind, we certainly invited staff to provide any further comments that they wish to make. And based on the conversation this evening, if there are matters of that sort, then we can further adjust, improve the report, and in effect, being responsive to a particular matter that we missed, and then finalize the report for you. So I will present to you in summary form what is in that report. And you are handed out a section of the report that's called the Financial Summary Analysis, and that includes some red-line adjustments that we made since the time we submitted the first version of the draft report that was dated the 16th of November. This was the 19th of November. So that shows exactly where the changes were in that particular section that I will present after I provide an introduction to what we're doing. As a matter of background, the City of Lompoc engaged Urban Futures, I will mention or use our acronym of UFI as I go through this report, to perform an affordable housing program analysis based on a 20-point scope of work. Chapter one is the Housing Project Compliance Review. That's the area of specialty for my colleague, Rayette Frazier. This represents or responds to the scope of work categories 2 through 9. And then, chapter 2 is the Housing Project Financial Summary Analysis. This is the part that I took the lead on, and it responds to scope of work categories 10 through 20. In addition, exhibit 2 in the report, in the back, provides the data identified in scope of work category 1, listing all of the properties that are within the City of Lompoc that were, at least at one time, owned by the Lompoc Housing and Community Development Corporation. And I believe, based on later review, there's actually, I think, one site that's, I think, just over the city limits or used to be. But anyway, it does respond to that particular issue, and I guess more. And then, in order to conduct the scope of work, city staff provided UFI remote access to affordable housing program files. And folks, you have a lot of them, so they were quite voluminous. It was quite a challenge to go through that, so we got information that way. We also conducted drive-by site visits for each of the properties described in the report. And then, we also conducted data retrieval visits to City Hall to identify and collect further needed documentation. And based upon that, we created this report responsive to your scope of work, divided into two chapters, where we provided you summary information and further data as exhibits in the report. With that being the case, I'm going to turn the lectern over to my colleague, Rayette Frazier. She will walk you through in summary fashion what is contained in the Housing Project Compliance Review. And as soon as she finishes with that, I'll be back up to finish. So Rayette, if you please, to advance it.
Good evening. I'm Rayette Frazier. I'm going to present the compliance component of the report, and we'll just start off with the next slide. So UFI prepared a detailed housing compliance, spreadsheets which are incorporated in your report. I believe it starts on page 12, and that is a breakdown of all of the various properties. The available record has revealed that consistent monitoring efforts were made by the LRDA to gather documentation for compliance certification of tenant rent and income for the properties There was little to no documentation with regards to the city's community development division's monitoring efforts related to CDBGD covenants and home covenants, not inclusive of the Santa Barbara Home Consortium. The city had an agreement with the county relating to the CDBG from 2007 to 2012, indicating that the county was responsible for monitoring the CDBG projects, not paid for solely with the city CBG funds. However, there was no documentation found in the files relating to that particular monitoring. The home properties included in the Santa Barbara County Consortium appear to be monitored consistently. However, we found little documentation in the files prior to 2003. There appears to be many attempts throughout the years by both the LRDA and the county to work with LH CDC through the monitoring process. However, their efforts were not always successful. Although there were periods where properties were in compliance, the majority of the periods were non-compliant, or we found that there was no response from LH CDC to request for reports or response to findings. Annual reports for CDBG and home were due on an annual basis from LH CDC but were not submitted per the county documentation, and also per what we did or did not find in the files. Site monitoring was annually performed by the county for those properties included in the county home consortium. And this practice was followed until 2008, at which time the county began monitoring annually due to lack of response by LH CDC to previous year's findings and concerns. The county provided a written report with their findings, concerns, indicating items that had been corrected as a result of the exit interview. And for projects involving rehabilitation, the LRDA staff visited sites during the rehabilitation process. They tracked the progress and inspected the completed units. During 2005, the agency began making quarterly drive-by maintenance inspections in response to increased public concern and due to the decline of several properties. These efforts were documented in the LRDA files via quarterly tracking sheets. Letters were sent, and follow-ups were performed noting corrections that were made to the properties. Overall, the available record reflects appropriate and consistent efforts on the part of LRDA staff to perform the necessary compliance monitoring. The same cannot be documented with respect to the CDC staff efforts. However, and in each instance, the available record does not indicate the reasons why LH CDC decided not to comply. And that concludes my portion.
All right, thank you, Rayette. Of course, Rayette's here to answer any questions that may come up later. Now, for the Financial Summary Analysis component, UFI has prepared 18 summary sheets for all the loans recorded made for the 18 LH CDC-owned or formerly-owned properties. And by the way, the term loans of record have to do with the record that the City of Lompoc had that we got to review. I want to differentiate that from what might be in a title report, which would only cover currently-recorded loans. Of the 18 sites for which data were reviewed, 15 are existing housing sites, 2 are vacant, and 1 is a commercial site, which is the Lompoc Theater site. Of the 18 sites reviewed, 6 are owned by private owners other than LH CDC, 3 are owned by the city or successor agency, and 9 may have either completed the foreclosure process or are going through that process now. They may have all done that by now, actually, just that we don't have information to that extent. It appears that at the conclusion of this process, the Lompoc Housing and Community Development Corporation will not own any of the 18 sites. For the 15 existing housing sites, 14 have valid housing affordability covenants. In one case, which is 709 and 713 North East Street, the covenants were extinguished by way of a foreclosure. At least, that's what the preliminary title report says. Of the 14 sites with valid housing affordability covenants, 3 are owned by the city or the successor agency. And of the other 11 housing sites with valid covenants, with the exception of one site, which is 201 and 207 East College Avenue, the loans that generated the covenants have either been refinanced, repaid, or extinguished. Notwithstanding this, the affordable covenants remain in place as the primary loans were subordinate to covenants. On a collective basis, the city or successor agency still controls 171 valid affordable housing covenants. This is, by the way, the essence of why cities do what they do in this area and why they have covenants, is to ensure that the units that have been assisted remain affordable to families at the particular identified income group for the term of the covenant. And as you look through the detailed material behind, you'll see that those covenants were designed to last between 30 and 55 years. That's a long time, and that certainly is an important fact to know, that those covenants still exist. And by the way, having covenants of superior financing is always the goal of housing professionals at the local government level, and that was accomplished in every case except one as a part of the Lompoc Housing Program. It is very important to state that for those sites where there is not a city loan of record due to foreclosure, enforcement of the covenant on a going-forward basis will be based solely on the covenant, not on the threat of default under a note or deed of trust that would no longer be enforced. That means that it may not be more difficult to enforce, but it will mean that you'll have more educational requirements on the part of what will be new owners, and potentially a good number of new owners, that you may find, they come to the city and are surprised that there's a housing affordability covenant. In my experience in doing this, and I ran six different redevelopment agencies in my career, spanning over 40 years, and I've had this happen more than once, where new owners seemed just surprised that this happened, and didn't seem to read their title reports that the covenants really existed. And so they needed education, besides maybe some counseling. But they got educated, and the units continue to be affordable. It's also important to note that several of those sites were provided layered city-related financing. This is also not unusual. It's very difficult to finance affordable housing. And I haven't seen affordable housing, a project yet, that is directed at the very low-income level that can be done with a single source of financing, unless it's a single unit and there's grant funds. But if you're talking about multiple units, the necessity for layered, multiple sources of financing is an absolute requirement. In some instances, these loans were either repaid or refinanced. As a part of its overall review, UFI examined the approval of record for several of the sites that received such layered financing. We wanted to see how this was done. In all cases, UFI found appropriate documentation and staff reports that were submitted to the city council and/or the agency board that explained the purpose of the financing or refinancing, and provided options to the appropriate governing board. The record reviewed reflects that the affected governing board selected one of the suggested options. And therefore, all such loans approved, or all such loans approval records examined by UFI appeared to be in the proper order, adequately justified, and professionally presented. And I will stop there just for a moment, in a way, in a level of detail that I have never seen before. You've got a lot of information as a board, more than is typical in what we see. So we see transparency through on us, on the part of staff, and certainly a professional job in bringing forward matters of this sort to you for consideration. There we go. With respect to overall financing, the Lompoc Housing and Community Development Corporation financed the acquisition and rehab or development of the 18 sites for just over $29 million, and they used layered financing from multiple sources. And one of the largest sources, I think the largest single source, was from the private sector, representing about 30% of that amount. The city's portion of the total financing, inclusive of all sources, and that means city, CDBG, home, redevelopment agency, CHAF, anything with the city's name attached to it in one form or another, was just over $4.8 million, or about almost 17%. Just a little over $1.7 million worth of related city financing has been repaid. It's always a good thing to have when you have a loan. About $1.3 million worth of city-related financing has been converted to real estate owned through the foreclosure or deed and lewd process. There is one property that's still in process now, and that's counted in the $1.3 million. There was almost $750,000 worth of city-related financing that has been extinguished by foreclosure, but I want to emphasize, not the covenant, the loan, but not the covenant. Almost $790,000 worth of city-related financing is subject to extinguishment, as such loans are junior to financial liens that are, according to the available record, in default. In fact, the Lompoc Housing and Community Development Corporation appears to be in default on the first loan of record in each case, and for some time. So I wouldn't, given the record that we have, which is somewhat dated, I wouldn't be surprised if either all of the foreclosures have been concluded, or that's nearly the case. In addition, almost $15.7 million worth of financing remains of record. Almost all of that pertains to the project at 201 and 207 East College Avenue. That is a very interesting project, a very modern one. Includes tax credit, equity funds in it, as well as private activity bonds. It was an extraordinarily well-done project, and is maintained in excellent condition to this day. And to the extent that any city-related financing has been extinguished by foreclosure, and given the foregoing available record provided by the city staff, suggests that such extinguishments were casualties of the recent deterioration of the housing market. We've seen circumstances like this among our clients throughout the state. So we're not surprised that this particular circumstance has occurred in this jurisdiction. Now, with respect to our recommendations, these are primarily in, I think exclusively, actually, in Rayette's area, but I'll continue in the presentation, and then it will be available jointly for questions. On a going-forward basis, UFI recommends that the city develop a monitoring matrix to identify the various and most restrictive terms for each property. The matrix could be used as a tool to help layer requirements which would enable the monitoring to be combined. By the way, then you would monitor to the most restrictive covenant and get credit for the others that would also apply. And this will simplify the process of the whole for the projects as well as the agencies, that means the original funding entities. It is recommended that all individuals responsible for reporting by the owners receive regular training to ensure that they are adequately informed of the requirements, procedures, and due dates. As I mentioned earlier, anticipate that you will have more than a handful, I think, probably more than a half dozen, new owners of these different sites. And they, by the way, small apartment complexes, the folks that are responsible for these sorts of things, managing their apartments, have a tendency to turn over on a more regular basis. Therefore, having the ability to provide training on an ongoing basis, at least have the opportunity once a year, would be very effective in getting their compliance on a going-forward basis. And with the amount of reporting involved, it is highly recommended that an electronic filing system be developed to help with data collection and file retention. That will also expedite receiving the data. Moreover, we believe that it would be in the best interest of the City of Lompoc in the long run to contract out its housing compliance monitoring. This has to do with the comments that Rayette mentioned earlier with respect to the uneven approach with respect to compliance monitoring by two separate divisions of the city, granted ones with the former redevelopment agency. And by the way, I just want to make this real clear. Nowhere did we find anything at any time that suggests there was any malice aforethought, any intent on anyone not to do what they were supposed to do. However, when you have two functions that basically, for all intent and purposes, are the same in terms of approach, but they're managed a little differently, it's not unusual to find different results. So we're saying that if you were to have this done uniformly, you would have a more effective process. That's what we've found with other clients. And there are multiple firms providing this service in California at reasonable rates, and proposals for such services could be obtained through issuance of a and proposals for such services could be obtained through issuance of a request for proposals process. And then finally, the use of a subject matter expert, professionals, in this case, through consultant, will provide the city of Lumpoke with a higher level of confidence that the affordability compliance requirements of its covenants are achieved and thus avoid future problems. Remember, you have 171 housing affordability covenants. There are 171 low-income families in the city, whether now or as it goes on in the future, that depend on the housing being available to them at affordable price. And we're not suggesting that any owner is not necessarily interested in doing that, but compliance is required to make sure they're on the same page, and they do it correctly by the book, so that the beneficiaries, being the low and moderate income family, will gain that benefit. So that concludes our summary, and Rayette and I would be pleased to respond in any questions you have. We also have a copy of the full report, so if you draw our attention to a particular page, we can respond in that fashion. And as I mentioned earlier, if there are particular matters that are in the record that you felt needed to be further emphasized anywhere, we would be happy to take a note in that area, and in the final report, so respond. So thank you for this opportunity, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
I wonder if you would, with regard to the financial side, which is of a large concern to all of us, if you would take them property by property and comment about what you found when you looked at it, and just in a general sense, that everything is as it should be, starting with page 45, I believe?
Okay, through the summary sheets themselves?
Yeah, just kind of go through, and then I'll ask each councilor if they have a question about that particular property.
The actual handout document replacements I gave you don't have pages' numbers on them, but in the actual report, starts with page 45. And this is a property located at 120 through 120 and 1/2, South K Street, also known as the South K cottages. And what we noted there, in the larger sense, is that the loans that were made by the agency in the past were repaid, and therefore, there's no further financial lien in place, and the covenants remain active. There is financing through a private persons on this particular project.
And in a general sense, because you mentioned earlier that there was a difference in managing a covenant when you don't have a deed of trust in the link, could you just comment on the enforcement mechanism that would typically be used on a property like this, where everything's paid off, but there's a covenant in place?
It requires an open line of communication with the owner. So having the ability to follow where a property is in terms of ownership, at a minimum, those kinds of things are verified annually, so that you know who you're dealing with at all times. Again, the small or the complex, and I'm not saying this is true in any particular case, but we're looking at a duplex here. The individuals who own duplexes are, I will use the term entry-level investors. You don't usually get institutional investors buying duplexes. These are folks that are maybe investing in property, and I'm not saying this is true with the lender here. They are individuals, but there's a tendency for them to invest for retirement, for example. And so that property management in itself may not be their strong point. And by the way, there's exceptions to every rule, but that's what I have found in my career. So the way to maintain a proper compliance relationship is to have your constant level of communication with them, to make sure that they are aware of what they have to do, when they have to do it, and to ensure you don't miss a beat in that respect. So that's how that would be approached. The issue is, I guess some folks might think, well, gosh, what happens if I don't do anything about it? Well, here's what really happens. They would be given, let's say, a stern advice, that they should comply, there is a covenant that they should comply with. I mean, ultimately, the decision is that if there's absolute failure to comply, that you have the right to seek redress in the Superior Court. They would be in a legal bind, so to speak. By the way, I've had circumstances myself with experience where it had a threat to that effect, had to occur, but never a case where a lawsuit was actually filed. So usually, folks will figure out, especially if they read the covenants, which, by the way, some folks might call fine print, they're not. Very, very nice-sized font, you can read it. I've looked at yours, they are clear what has to be done. There's no mistake. It isn't a one piece of paper said, you have to do good and let us know how you do it. No, it's not like that at all. They are very thoroughly done, and they're very clear, easy to understand. But the example I'm giving you is a circumstance where during the term of the covenants, you may have one or more entry-level investors that need some extra care and understanding what they have to do. Staying on top of them for a compliance review is really the best way to do that.
More education than enforcement, is what you're saying?
Yes, and however you might go with future compliance, it needs to be uniform. You don't have to hire a consultant, but if you're going to stay with staff, I would do this uniformly, keep it in the hands of one division, given you're dealing with 171 covenants. That's less than a full-time job, so you can certainly have a single person do that. The advantage of having a consultant, by the way, is that you may, you'd get a team of individuals. If you have staff turnover, you don't have to train anyone, where in the circumstance with staffing here, you might have to.
Well, and happily, the person who has this property has one more, so they have a little larger investment. Are there any questions?
Yeah, maybe so.
Councilmembers, anyone? Okay. Page 46, which is the Marx House?
Yes, it's 203 North N Street, the Marx House. And in this case, the city is the proud owner. This occurred through a deed and lew process. And when you receive a deed and lew, you take the property with liens in place, meaning that you've assumed the county's loan on this property. So you would have to make sure that you do all the compliance work. Actually, I anticipate that you, that in the future, this particular property may be sold. I'm reading your minds now, I really don't know. You could continue to do this for a while if you want. But that's a property controlled by the city, and you undoubtedly, as the city council, will discuss whatever your options are as it relates to that site in the future.
Would we be advised to file a first trust deed covenant on this?
The covenant's already there. Your covenants are in place. In addition, let's just say that the only, just as an example, if there was no county home, or whatever source they used to fund this, and it was just city funds, let's say it was a city loan and a CDBG, and you foreclosed on it, and you foreclosed out the CDBG, and there might be a question, what happened to the CDBG covenant? And it was not subordinate to the city loan? Well, it'd be wiped out, but what you'd do right away is turn around and re-record it. In other words, to stay straight with HUD. So if you had that circumstance, you have that capability, you could do it. In this case, you don't need to. So that covenant remains in place.
But we would need to, we would need to if we transferred the properties to someone else?
Well, the covenant's already in place, so they would take the site subject to it. However, I would say, because you're the owner, and I would defer to your city attorney on this, but in the agreement of transfer, I think it would be wise to have some language in the agreement where the person is acknowledging those covenants exist, so they can't claim ignorance later on. I don't think we're talking about multiple pages, maybe just a paragraph or section. I would leave that, if the decision is made, leave that to the city attorney to give you a language that would be appropriate.
Okay. Any questions on this one? Okay. Page 47.
Forty-seven, property 3, 305 through 309 North K Street, the Portobello Apartments. And this is, there are 12 two-bedroom, two-studio apartments, total of 14 units. In this particular case, the information we had, the latest information we had, is that there was a notice of default filed by Los Padres Bank. Again, given the timeframe for that, it was back in April, this may have been completed. And I think the purpose of our report was not necessarily to come up with that finding. You may have independently got a status report on where that is, but to show where the properties were at any given time. And by the way, I think I should clarify one other thing. I've been asked this question, I can remember being asked this question earlier today by a member of the media, who wanted to know, was this report a forensic audit? And in the sense that, did we find wrongdoing, legally wrongdoing, that kind of a thing? And I emphasize that it is not a forensic audit. Urban Futures, we are not detectives. We were not, in our scope of work, asked to do anything like that. So this report does not deal with anything other than culling through the record available to us, and combining it in such a way that it could be understood in a certain format. So where things are in the foreclosure process, what that might mean in the big picture, this report does not deal with those matters whatsoever. I do believe you have an item on your agenda where you may talk a little bit about that matter a little bit later, in terms of what you might do in the future.
Yes. Councilmember Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question starting here, but if I go through, I see a very interesting pattern that you just have added on. Anytime there is a refinancing loan, it appears that it's not on the record what the terms are.
It was not in the record we had. And we say throughout this report that, because we might say something is unknown to us, it doesn't mean it's unknown, in other words, not possible to know. It just means that the record we had did not reflect specifics.
Right.
So because we don't say anything about it, doesn't mean there's not information that you could get that's responsive to it.
But did the city provide you with all the records? The city staff?
All the records we have are from the city, is a better way to say that.
Okay, so all the records that you have are from the city. So am I to imply that the city may not have a record that has what the refinancing terms of these loans were? Is that what the conclusion?
I cannot make any conclusion like that, because I would not know.
Well, I would like to know.
I wouldn't go that far.
So, but you were not given refinancing loan terms in many of these properties. You did not receive that from the city?
We got enough information to be able to say what we've said about a particular source of financing, but only that far.
So where would you think we could get the information regarding specific refinancing terms for some of these properties? Where would those records lie? Where should they be?
Well, I really can't answer that, because I don't know. If I knew, I would give an answer, but I don't.
Okay, so if the city goes ahead and refinances a loan, shouldn't there be any record somewhere?
Well, the city would not be refinancing it. This is the Lumpoke Housing and Community Development Corporation doing the refinancing. In the cases where you see subordinate loans to the refinancing, what this board would have done, unless the agreements contained provisions providing automatically for resubordination, I know there might have been a case or two, but I didn't see any of those, then the matter would have been brought back to you with a very extensive staff report explaining what was involved in the refinancing, what was the basis for it, including appraisals, we saw that too, that would justify what was being proposed, and then an explanation of, to the extent there would be any cash out, what the cash out revenue would be used for.
And there are cases here in which that occurred?
Well, there are cases where we have described that, to the extent that we had information to describe it. And I think in two cases, we give a little bit more information than others, and that came directly from staff reports that were used to bring the matter forward to the city council. So in effect, we had at least as much information as you did.
Okay. Okay, so when those, I'd like to discuss in detail when those cases come, and I think we know which one we're specifically talking about, but you know, you made the changes today, so it must be fresh in your mind, and one of them is specifically the J Apartments, property number eight.
Actually, I mean, they came to you today, we were working on.
Oh, okay.
I mean, folks, and I don't want to sound like a whiner, because I don't, but I have been thinking about Lumpoke, working on Lumpoke for Saturdays and Sundays for months. So I think a lot about it, but only from the perspective of the data that I was provided, and I'm very thankful to have had it, to be able to do this, and very thankful for the electronic data, because then I could actually do it that way. I could, you know, I have an office at home, but I don't have to wear a suit. I can just wear my.
I understand that, I have an office.
My jeans and my t-shirt. But anyway, yes, I looked at the data as it relates to this particular subject matter, and put down what I found to be of interest. And as I mentioned at the outset of the presentation, that doesn't mean that there is something else that maybe is of interest to anyone.
Oh, absolutely.
In the decision-making process in Lumpoke that is in the record, but somehow, I didn't touch upon something. And I would always make adjustments in that respect, if there was such a thing. We endeavored to be as thorough as we could, based upon what we believed the information would be used for. That's why I made the comment about forensics. There might have been an audit of that sorts. There might have been an expectation, I don't believe necessarily on the part of any of you, but maybe some in the community, that what we were doing was different than what we really did. And so I try to be clear about that, but that's something that may still linger. And, but we're not detectives, so we didn't go any further than the data that we had.
Well, I'm very well aware of that, and I'm not expecting you to be a detective, especially on your blue jeans at home.
That's the best kind I've been told, though. You want to be sort of like Sub Rosa.
That's right. Anyway, I will wait until we get to property eight to ask you more specifics on that, but I do find that there is a pattern in which there is basically refinancing loan terms information, the records were not available to you, and therefore, you didn't comment on that.
Yes, I would say that, but I want to also say that I will admit before you, I'm an imperfect person.
Oh, I'm not saying that.
No, no, I'm going to say this right now, and especially for staff, because I don't mean to offend anyone. If data was more specific in the file, and yours truly, with my eyes and glasses on, blew it, just tell me, and I will adjust it. And that's it. I don't think that I have, but that doesn't mean I didn't, because these latest adjustments were based solely on that, that I had missed something. I missed something on one property, which caused me to re-review several more.
And I thank you for that. I really thank you for that.
Yeah, so I wanted to make it right, and if there are other little things, it's like, why is this like this, that would cause a further review, we'll fix it. But we attempted to be as thorough as we could.
I thank you for having gone and reviewed all the properties based on one finding that you got.
Just a question for the city attorney. If, in the case of property number three, LH CDC went with a private lender and refinanced the property, would we typically receive those documents?
Not necessarily, especially if the agency or city's financing was repaid, which actually is what happened with property number three. So because the city no longer has a finance, or the agency has a financial interest in the property, as Mr. Ducat said, that we have, the covenants are still applicable, but because they don't have a financial interest in the property, that the interest in finding out what happened with the money that was used, the private money that got into it, how it was used, is not as important.
And is there, I'm sorry, is there a mechanism that would have required them to give us this information, or not? As we were paid off, would they have had any obligation to provide this information to us, the LH CDC?
My experience tells me that probably not, and my experience also tells me, if we were supposed to have gotten the information, it would have been on the file.
Thank you. Are there any other questions with regard to property number three? Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. My apologies if this was discussed, and I may have missed it, but in the refinancing process, if that doesn't affect the affordability covenant, then there should be no reason that that would be reported to us, correct?
Yes, sometimes, if the refinancing isn't being used to pay off the loan, the public agency loan, then the public agency wants to understand, is there equity that's being taken out? Because if there is, they should be paying back the city loan. So when the city loan's paid off, we don't need to worry about, at least from a financial standpoint, worry about whether there is equity being taken out, because the city loan is being covered already, and we have the covenant that still applies.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martner?
A point on that, so if there is a refinance that goes on, and there is equity that is taken out as cash, however, there is a covenant in place. Covenant in place means that you basically cannot raise the rents, correct? So if you take equity out, and you get cash out.
Rents are a function of what the median income is, so if there's an increase in median income.
Oh, absolutely, okay.
You get a little bit of a rate.
Absolutely, a little, but of course, I understand that, it's always. But if you take hundreds of thousands of dollars out and refinance based on the market value of a property, but that property's under covenant, there is something wrong there. Because what are you doing with that extra equity? You're adding debt to your property. are you doing with that extra equity? You're adding debt to your property, but you cannot raise the rents arbitrarily, because you're under covenant, correct? Am I correct in making that interpretation? I see her shaking her head, yes.
What I can say is, as it relates to a sort of a prototype of how you would look at such a thing, or frankly, underwrite any loan, you look for there to be net operating income that is greater than the amount of debt service. And typically, depending on the types of units, they'll run between 125% to 190%. It depends on how old the units are. And the reason for that is, the older the units, need more capital reinvestment. So you have to have enough in cash flow to be able to cover that. So that's how they're underwritten. And by the way, in the file, what we saw was, as a typical process by staff, is to do a pro forma analysis of what the coverage ratio was on the project over time. And so there was that level of review by staff. I'm not going to second guess staff's position at the time with respect to coverage ratio, or as it related to what their assessments were for capital improvement demands. I mean, that's something that we weren't asked to do. We do that in other cases for housing projects, but we were not asked to do that, so there was no information in this report about that subject. So you're on target with the concept, that you should not take out more loans. By this way, by the way, this applies to all of us. You're taking out a house loan, you better have enough money to pay the note, because if you don't, what's going to happen? Well, it's bad.
Absolutely, and we know how bad it was, and it is, correct?
Yeah, there are certain communities in California, I have to say, that we, right after it hit, we were driving through them for other reasons, and we would see every third house with a for-sale sign on it, because the people could not pay the mortgage. They were hopeful of selling the home before it was foreclosed on. Unfortunately, a good portion of them were foreclosed on.
You know, the unfortunate thing here is that we're dealing with tax dollars. We're dealing with taxpayers' monies. And if there is an organization out there that decides to take equity out of a property, but it's still under covenants, it seems to me that it's just a really shady business to deal with tax dollars that way, because you're really speculating on tax dollars, knowing that you will not be able to recover those monies with rent, because you're under covenant. So you're just adding more debt to that property that tax dollar payers own. You're basically devaluing the taxpayers' dollars. And I don't think the public likes that. The public in general does dislike strongly when our government misuses tax dollars and adds on debt. That's a comment. Okay.
Yes, our report doesn't deal with that subject.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I know and I understand that.
So then, to clarify, with regard to this property, the loan that they took out from Los Padres Bank paid off the city, and we don't know if it paid off the county, because we're not, we weren't looking at their documents. And chances are, if they went to the bank, they would have had to meet the-
The reason we say unknown is that the time or the date of the preliminary title report they reviewed, which is over a year old, the county loan was still a record. It was a record then.
Okay.
Meaning that the Los Padres Bank loan was superior to it. So if Los Padres Bank perfects the foreclosure, the county loan will be extinguished.
Okay.
Or has been. We just don't know that. Usually, financial institutions, especially when they've started the process, move things along rather mechanically. And so it would be strange for a process to begin in April not to be finished by November. But that is possible. It's possible. It's still out there. We just don't know.
Yeah, they've delayed it several-
Others probably do, but we don't.
Yeah, they've delayed it several times, looking for someone to assume the properties, was my understanding, but I don't know where they are today.
And Mr. Mayor, if I made a follow-up on what I thought you were asking, too, was, yes, you would anticipate that the private financer would do the same thing that was just described, is making sure that the loan value ratio was making sense. So we can only assume that when the private entity did that, they did the same analysis, but we don't know if they did or not.
Any other questions with regard to number three? And number four, then?
Number four, 328 to 330 North K Street. And this is a multifamily, four-apartment project with a childcare facility. And this also has primary financing from Los Padres Bank. And at least at the time of the preliminary title report we reviewed, the status of the county home and the city CDBG, the CDBG loans was unknown to us. That may have changed. It's hard to say. And in this particular case, this is not a refinancing, though, on the part of Los Padres Bank, the city, and came in before, actually, it could be, actually. I may have the wrong page. But anyway, that's the particular summary of that particular site.
And again, the covenant is in first trustee position?
It's a valid covenant, yes.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Is that why the city CDBG loan status is unknown, because we, the lender, the first lender is the Los Padres Bank, and we're not sure what their action is?
It's that the data we had is from a preliminary title report dated September 2, 2011. And so a lot of time has gone by since the process began, and so therefore, we don't have information as to the current status of the site, whether foreclosure has been perfected. And that explains why the information we gave in summary is conditional, because we don't know that.
Yeah, that loan's subject to that first, and, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Just aside, the city attorney, you know, we've gotten updates with regard to, it's not Los Padres anymore, it's Pacific Western. And I can think of at least two prior occasions where they delayed their foreclosure, and they had a trustee in there managing the properties and so on. Have we heard anything with regard to those foreclosures?
Actually, as of Friday, we heard that they have gone through the foreclosure process. One of the properties was sold to Santa Barbara Housing Authority.
Not to be confused with the Santa Barbara County Housing Authority, it's another organization. Yeah, anyway.
I don't know. I think it's the Santa Barbara County Housing Authority-
Oh, okay.
-that purchased it.
Is it property number-
That's, I want to make sure I have the right one. I think that's the 725 to 733, yeah. It's 725 to 733, it's, let's see which one it is on here.
E Street?
Yeah, it's E Street, yes. It's property number 14.
And the other properties remained in their inventory?
And one of the, the 1, 717 and 721 E Street, let me see which ones those are.
Is it property number-
Yes. Those were, what we were told by the attorney for Pacific Western is, it didn't go to that housing authority bid, but they didn't, weren't successful bidder. It went to a private person, but they weren't sure what the name of that was. So we actually checked the county documents today, as late as today, we had Terry Schwab, Paralegal, do that. And it still hasn't been recorded, so we don't know what the name of the person is.
Is it property number five?
Yes. And then all of the other properties that are noted as Los Padres Bank were taken over by the bank. They're still in receivership. They now have to go through the process of getting the receivership lifted, and then that property will be deeded through a trustee's deed to the bank.
City attorney, anytime that Los Padres Bank is listed, that is now Pacific Western?
Pacific Western, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Next property?
Property five, 401 to 405 West Chestnut Avenue, three units. In this case, the redevelopment agency loans have been repaid. The private owner has, they filed a default in July 2011. They may have completed that by this time. And the covenants are valid.
Any questions about number five?
Mr. Mayor, just to update you, and as to property number one and property number five that we were just talking about, those are properties that were, subject to these trusts, were owned by the Jays. As far as we know, the Jays have foreclosed, because that's what we were told, but we, again, haven't seen any documentation recorded, so we aren't, we don't know exactly when that happened.
And on that one, the city loans were already repaid, and the covenant's in first position?
Yes.
Okay. And any questions? Number six?
Number six, 434 through 438, North L Street, the Casa Contraes Apartments, 12 units, covenants are valid. This is another one of the Los Padres Bank properties, I think may have fall, may fall under what the city attorney had shared with you earlier to some extent. The agency's loan was repaid in the past. There was a county home loan and a county CDBG loan, for which we did not have current information on. So they are, depending on where that foreclosure might go, those are subject to being extinguished.
Councilmember Costa?
Covenant's valid.
Councilmember Costa?
Can you restate that last statement?
If the foreclosure is perfected by the first lender, then the county home and county CDBG loans are subject to extinguishment. Of course, they could bid on it, if they wanted to.
But the covenant would still remain in place?
Covenant's remain, yes.
And so I just want to confirm that, again, with all of these, where Pacific Western Bank is the first lien holder, they're on receivership?
No, they foreclosed.
Except for the two that just were sold in that foreclosure, and the others are, in essence, they've also been foreclosed on, we're just waiting for the process to be completed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You had a summary spreadsheet up there listing, you know, various different categories of monies, that when you're talking about, that it's unknown what the status of this CDBG, whether it's going to be extinguished. Where in that spreadsheet is that? You know, are they being, there is a potential loss of the CDBG loans, right? We don't know where-
In some cases, in this, the site we're talking about now, they're county loans.
Right, so, well, all this is a county loan, I thought it was a city loan. Well, for the cases in which we don't know, is there any cases that we don't know whether the city loans are going to be extinguished?
Well, in the cases where the notices of default have been filed, and my instincts tell me that, given the, what appears to be the general financial collapse of the Lompoc Housing and Community Development Corporation, especially as it relates to the filing of notices of tax defaults, so it seems like they financially just cratered.
Right.
Therefore, I can't imagine, unless somebody was, maybe decided not to fund a library and fund them instead, to bring all these matters current, that ultimately title will change. And in the foreclosure process, it always comes down to whether or not someone would bid a price equal to or greater than the amount required by the first lender, which, by the way, it's a function of how much is owed and what the costs are associated with perfecting the foreclosure. So with respect to what we show here, we show the amounts of the original loan, not the amount that was outstanding, unpaid, and it doesn't include any of the costs of foreclosure. So it's hard to say exactly what the amount is unless you actually see the notification that they file in foreclosure. But anyway, they will want that amount, so if there's a bidder for that amount, or a greater amount, then they become the proud owner, and if there's any surplus money, that gets applied to lower priority lenders.
Right, so you're basically saying it's very difficult to estimate potentially what would be the loss to this city, once all of these foreclosures are-
Well, we have estimated in our report, in total, in terms of what has been extinguished and what is threatened with extinguishment-
Well, but that's my original question. So that what is being threatened to be extinguished is included in those-
It is included, yes.
Okay, that was really the original question.
Right. And although we're saying unknown, only because we don't have current data, my reason for going through the explanation is that it is highly unlikely that the process will have been halted, given that, from what we understand, the corporation financially is cratered. So they, as it relates to paying bills, they don't exist, for reasons we have no knowledge of. You may know that better. But they're not there.
Okay, next.
Okay, we're on number seven, 500 through 504 North T Street. This is the Volker Apartments. And in this one, the foreclosure, it's got a trustee's deed dated May 22, 2012, that extinguished the city CDBG loan. The covenant is valid. And the Volkers, at least at that time, became the owner. Whether they still own it today is another matter, but they were then.
Yeah. Any questions on number seven? Number eight?
Number eight, 501 through 513 North S Street and 508 North T Street, the J Apartments. And in this case, the first and second lender were both the Jays, and they perfected the foreclosure on June 28, 2012. The effect of that was to extinguish the city CDBG loan. It's almost a quarter of a million dollars. And the redevelopment agency, CHIFA, loan was repaid previously during January 26. The covenants are valid.
Any questions about number eight? Councilmember Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your latest update, you mentioned that there was a refinance done on this property, correct? And per some staff report, $330,000 of net proceeds were used to pay the RDA loan and for other commercial historic preservation or affordable housing projects within the city?
That's correct.
What does that mean?
That is an exact quote from the staff report, and that's all I know.
And what does that mean?
That means that they were apparently given the liberty to use the net proceeds outside of repaying the RDA loan for any of those categories.
And they didn't pay the CDBG loan?
There's no further documentation regarding how the funds were used. If there had been, we would have reported it.
So they paid the RDA loan, but they didn't pay the CDBG loan, by refinancing?
That is true.
Why would, okay, I mean, that is, that is very odd. I'm sorry. That's extremely odd to see that we allowed an organization to refinance, basically on a market value, I assume. I mean, who's going to refinance anybody unless it looks good? And then the city doesn't require to pay one of the loans back?
The record's extensive on this matter, so there are, there's plenty of information with respect to how the underwriting of that particular refinance was done.
Could you tell us a little bit more details, because I'm very curious? I mean-
Okay, well, I don't have any of that with me. What I do remember about this, though, is it relates to the language that's in the comments section, I lifted that directly out of the staff report. But in addition to that, there's an appraisal in there, there is an analysis of cash flow, there's information of that sort. I just remember that it was there, and I did not review it for accuracy, content, not that sense.
I understand. So there was an appraisal done on that property, and the loan was refinanced, and there was cash that was taken out?
Correct. I did not review the appraisal as to the standard of the appraisal either, just so you know. I know there's three ways to look at value, and as it relates to income property, it should be based on income, but I didn't review it.
Should have been based on income, you mean, the income that the property was-
Income property should be valued on income.
But this is under covenant. We know what the income is, correct?
No, you were asking about the loans themselves. The covenants remain valid.
Right, but if, but you're saying that if a property is going to be appraised, it's appraised on the income?
It's appraised on income, yes.
Right, so-
And the income is based upon the covenants.
Right.
In other words, if you're going to look at historical records, that should reflect net operating income as a result of the covenants being in place.
Right. And this was, to your knowledge, this appraisal was based on that income?
No, I'm not saying that at all.
Oh, you don't?
I'm just telling you that there was an appraisal. My job was not to read an appraisal. I didn't do that.
Okay.
I'm just telling you how-
But somebody in the city staff should know that, because it is in a staff report, I guess.
Staff did an excellent job of creating a record with respect to the underwriting of loans. of loans.
Okay, so that question we can ask?
It's possible to find that documentation, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. So we do have the knowledge within the city?
I believe you do.
Okay.
I was not asked to look at that, though.
No, I'm, thank you.
I was told in the past that the funds that were taken from this were used to close the gap on the College Park property, because at the end of it, they had to fund the gap, and they borrowed money against several of their properties. And that's anecdotal information, but it was shared several times.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may ask, I would like to ask actually the city staff, what was, you know, that appraisal about, and what were, and how was it done? And I'm sure that information is not going to be given to me tonight, may not be readily available, but do we have it? And if so, can we get it? What is the, what was the appraisal terms of that specific property? And when could we get that, please?
We can go, we can get that, and Mr. Duquette explained that it's in the file, so we will pull that.
Could you give me a date?
We can have that as a memo by the second, we can, the first week in December, by the end of the first week in December.
First week in December, thank you.
Any other, I'm sorry, Councilmember Costa?
Sorry. Thank you, Mary Lynn, and my apologies if this has already been answered. This is all going through very slowly for me. In the contract between, or I guess the loan documents between the city and LHCC, did you review the loan document?
To the extent necessary to be able to come up with a summary sheet, yes.
Because I'm curious, and my assumption is that language was then not included that would preclude them from spending money, refinancing monies on anything but repaying the loan itself?
Well, what I'm saying is that the language I included here, I lifted word for word out of a staff report.
So then my question would be for staff, then, if that's a question that I would have, is was that, was there a decision by council on a contingent basis to allow this to occur? Or was the lack of language in a contract, or rather, a loan document, what allowed this to occur? I.e. the refinancing money going for something else besides the repayment of the loan? Does that make sense?
We can include that in the memo.
That would be great, thank you.
Any other questions with regard to this, this loan? Okay. Number nine?
Number nine, 503-507 and 507 and a half North E Street and 613 East Maple Avenue. Four apartment units, covenants are valid. This is also a Los Padres Bank, a primary loan site. They filed a notice of default, my goodness, a year and a half ago. The, the first CDBG loan was repaid, and they're, I'm indicating unknown as it relates to the second one, that's the zero interest rate, $199,406, $406 loan, and if the foreclosure is perfected, that loan would be extinguished. The covenants are valid.
Just in a general sense, a loan at zero interest, not due until 2041, is that one of those types of loans that is never intended to be repaid and gets written off when the covenant's completed, or?
I didn't see language in there that allowed a burn off of the loan, so I didn't think that was the case. The interest rate change was a result of the, of the refi, so the repayment of that loan, and then also the change of interest rate happened together.
Okay. Any questions? Number 10?
Number 10, 518 North T Street. This is five units, covenants are valid. The, this project, the foreclosure has been completed. It was a CDBG, city CDBG asset, so the city owns this property. The redevelopment agency had two loans, they were also previously repaid. The city's LAHTF loan was extinguished as a part of the foreclosure. However, the city still owns it, so you control its destiny. Covenants are valid. You've had it for a while, so maybe it's come to you before for discussion.
Yes, at great length. Okay. Any questions on number 10? Number 11?
Number 11, 521 through 537 North T Street, and this is a 35-unit apartment complex for very low income. The covenants are valid, another Los Padres Bank matter. The notice of default was filed a year and a half ago. All of the loans in this case have, were previously repaid. So, loans have been repaid, and the property apparently will end up in the bank's hands and ultimately in the hands of another owner someday in the future, and the covenants remain in place, and this falls under continuing covenant compliance activities in the future.
Any questions?
I suppose if something were to go bad, this was the kind of going bad you'd go for. Covenant's in place, you owe us no money. That, that's the best kind.
Couldn't wish for better than that. Number 12?
Number 12, 709 and 713 North E Street, 12 units, multifamily. In this case, the covenants were extinguished, and that's because of all of them, this is the one where the priority of the covenants that we could see were not superior to the first lender. And as a result, in this case, there's a special warranty deed that was given, and that means there was no bidders in this case. And so the first owner, or the owner, the first now owns this property, free and clear of any covenants.
City Attorney, that was the one that Citibank was involved in, correct? Yeah. Sure.
In this case, we wish we were wrong in what we saw, and, but that's what we, we saw on the record.
Yeah, the, this is the one where the, where there was no first trustee covenant recorded, and when Citibank foreclosed, it got wiped out. This was the one, this was the one loser. They've actually resold it since then.
And it's now owned by Medio Investments.
They, they?
Medio Investments.
They took it at foreclosure, and then they resold it a short time later.
Right.
I think they made money on it.
And actually, just to remind you, this is one of the two properties, back in December of last year, we put a chart together indicating high risk, low risk, no risk. This was one of the high-risk properties, just that, because the covenant was going to go away with the foreclosure. So it's a $75,000 potential that the city may have to fund back to the feds because the covenant was extinguished. We, we haven't yet, and I don't know what may transpire, but this was one of the, I just want to identify, this is one of those, this is one of those that was noted as a high-risk.
Yes.
Mayor, sorry, that's, that begs the question, why was there no covenant on the first trustee?
It was subordinated to the private lending. There was a covenant, it just was subordinated to the private lending.
It was the second, it wasn't the first.
But why is that on all the other cases it wasn't? Or is it, how is this one different?
I don't know the details of why that deal was done, the way it was done, and I don't know if the record has anything that's?
So that's one thing, if we could, if staff, I mean, I don't know how we figure out that answer, if that was something that should have been included in loan document that wasn't, or a contract that wasn't?
Just looking at the loan dates and the recordation dates, it probably all was financed at the same time, and there were times when certain private financing, the state law was, or the laws were set up in such a way that sometimes you could have the covenants, have the first be able to wipe out the covenants because of the fact that private financing was difficult to get, and that may be what the, I'm just looking at the dates on, on property 12, the loan date for all the loans was February 23 and February 27 of '01. So it could be that that's what, what was being explained at that time. I don't know.
Mayor Lynn, my assumption is the only reason Citibank was actually able to make money is because that covenant was extinguished.
I would believe that to be the case, yes.
And we may be the losers in the long run of that $75,000. Thank you.
Just as an observation, what the city attorney shared with you, based upon past experience that I've had in this regard, seems to be the explanation that the, the city and agency loans were added to the record after the first was already recorded in a first position, therefore placing the covenants in a subordinate position as well. What is not able to be determined in the record is why this four-day separation happened. Why wasn't this all done at the same time is, it's just unknown. That does happen. Now, the good news is that didn't happen on any of the other ones.
Yeah, the best news is it happened on the small one. Number 13? I'm sorry, Councilmember Martin?
Thank you. I guess I want to make the comment that, you know, a lot of the exercise that we're going through here is so we can learn how to write a policy to prevent this fiasco from happening again. So when Councilmember Costa is talking about, should this have been written in the terms, perhaps, to protect ourselves? I think it is extremely important for the staff to give us an input on that, and the legal counsel to give us an input on that, such as that this council can decide on the correct policy that will protect the city from what we just saw here in a minute, right? So, so, you know, I would like to really ask the legal counsel and the staff to really kind of pay close attention to this experience, what happened here. I mean, we did have something where we got wiped out, and the covenant went away, and we're liable. Can we write a policy when we do loans in the future where that can be not in fine print, but in big print, that it says that's not going to happen? Okay, so?
Yeah, there's a very simple way to handle this, and it basically is a communication to escrow or the trust company regarding the order of recordation. I didn't see any of this in the record, by the way, so if you were going to deal with a policy, the simple policy is to always have your affordability covenants recorded in a position superior to financing. That's the simple policy. The tactic for doing that is a very specific communication with the escrow company handling this regarding how they're going to record the documents. And with a, and this is what I've been used to doing, and I'd be happy to provide a sample to staff if they'd like to have a letter like this.
Please do, I mean, please do, I mean, this is extremely important.
Where the, they're instructed, if this, for any reason this doesn't happen, then they're instructed to return all paper. In other words, don't record anything. No money changes hands, then you go back to the people and you talk, what'd you just do? And by the way, they can fix anything. So let's say they made a mistake in recording, well, then you, then they have to sign a subordination, that's all. But that's where you can catch it, and you monitor how you're doing your actual fundings. And saying that doesn't mean anything they did was wrong. I'm just giving you an idea of how to perfect it in the future.
No, I understand, but, but remember why we're here today, okay? We know why we're here today, and the goal of all of this is to put a policy in place so this will not happen again.
Correct.
So if you can provide a sample, a simple thing, because I constantly hear from the staff, they don't have time, they don't have time, if you can just give them a boilerplate, because it seems that that's what they need.
Oh, you fill in the blanks?
Fill in the blanks.
City Attorney will love it, because it was written by attorney originally.
Thank you.
And it wasn't me, because I'm not.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
It'd be my pleasure to do that.
Number 13?
Number 13, 717 through 721 North E Street, six apartment units, and this is another Los Padres Bank financing. They, the notice of default was filed on April 25, 2011. The covenants are valid. The city CDBG loan that was originally applied to this project was repaid. The state home and the city home loans are unknown, only because we didn't have current information regarding the status of the foreclosure, but anticipating that, that both of those will be extinguished upon perfection of the foreclosure.
And the CDBG loan was repaid on the red line copy? Okay.
Yes, $30,000.
Okay, so the?
There was some confusion as to which dollar amount related to which source, and I found a better summary report that explained that clearly, so it enabled me to be enlightened, which is always helpful.
Councilmember Costa?
Can you explain this sentence a little bit further? It says, in addition, the respective recordation, is that how you say that word? I don't know. Priority with respect to the state home and city home loans was not clearly evident in the record, provided urban futures?
Yeah, what I, what I mean is, I don't know which one's the second, which one's the third.
But however, given the likelihood of a foreclosure action that would extinguish both loans, the matter is moot point.
Yeah, so when you're wiped out, it doesn't make any difference.
Understood.
You didn't win the race.
But now that we know that this property was bought by a private entity, which is what you announced earlier, City Attorney?
Oh, this one went to the back of the bank, I think.
You mentioned that the, the city attorney mentioned the Santa Barbara County Housing Authority?
This is a private entity.
A private entity?
Then these covenants are valid, then they, they're going to remain valid?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions on 13? Number 14?
14 is 725 through 733 North E Street, 18 apartment units, covenants are valid, another Los Padres Bank loan. The redevelopment agency loans in the past have been repaid, the county home loan is not known. We don't, we don't know what the status of this particular site is based upon the record that we had. However, given what we know about other such properties with financing from Los Padres Bank, we would expect that, that they haven't filed a notice of default that already, well, I'd be surprised if they haven't, is a better way to say it. Covenant is valid, though, no matter what.
Any questions on 14? 15?
15, 114 South K Street. This is the Casa del Desarrollo Apartments, and this, at least that's what it was supposed to be, it's vacant land. And the redevelopment agency, actually, it's now the successor agency, is the owner by trustees dated of July 22, 2011. The agency actually existed then. So the successor agency, being all of you, will deal with this. Now, this particular matter, my, my, my feeling is it was intended to be apartments, probably LMI fund financed. This would be transferred ultimately to your successor housing agency, which may also be you, and then you can deal with its future development at some point in the future. But you drive the bus on this one. And by the way, there was some discussion as to whether there should be covenants or not. Since the property never was ultimately developed, there were no specific covenants. All of that makes no difference, you're driving the bus. When ultimately this gets done, you can put on the covenants that you feel are appropriate for this project, for the target community that you wish to serve.
We own it?
Yep.
I'm wearing our other hat. Any, Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, just a quick question here. It said that we have $443,963.10 in this outstanding and unpaid balance in RDA loans, but the RDA amount listed is $375,000.
That was the original principal amount.
That was the original.
And in the process of apparently not paying the RDA, the Lom Polk Housing and Community Development Corporation ran up unpaid bills. There were also costs associated with the foreclosure, and that was the amount that if anyone else wanted to buy it, they could have bought it for that at the, on the courthouse steps, or wherever that's done in Santa Barbara County.
So the difference between the $443 and $375 is attributed then to the previous owner that we foreclosed on?
That's correct. That's correct. Apparently, they weren't paying you for a while. That's, that's, would it appears to be the case?
Just that, these are the additional costs. Number, any other questions on 15? Number 16?
Number 16, 201 and 207 East College Avenue. This is, this is your new project. This is a stellar piece of work. These are not easy to do. I do these for other clients, both cities and nonprofit corporations, so I really appreciate the effort that goes into this. This is completely current, and the, in this case, the folks that were involved in the corporate entities operating this particular project removed the Lom Polk Housing and Community Development Corporation at some point in the process, and it's now under different management completely. And the project, as far as we can tell, in every respect is performing very well.
No. No, this is College and G George. That was Pine and thereabouts, behind the shopping center. Question was, which one do we put an elevator in? It was the Housing Authority property on Pine, behind Vons. Any questions? Any questions on sixteen? Seventeen.
Seventeen, one oh seven East Ocean Avenue, vacant land, no covenants. Redevelopment agency in the past was repaid. This is a property that the Jays received as a deed in lieu back in October twenty-eleven, a little over a year ago. So now the property is in their hands to be used in the future and developed in some fashion consistent with the general plan and the zoning ordinance.
The H and Ocean Lot. Any questions on this? Number eighteen.
Okay, number eighteen, this is the Theater property. And in this particular case, this being, sort of falls out of the picture of what else was previously done relative to housing. It's a commercial project. The redevelopment agency is in the first position. Now the successor agency foreclosure was authorized by the successor agency board. It's my understanding that your oversight board had some issues. Wasn't certainly a responsibility of Urban Futures in this case, but I think it, this needs to be done. You need, if you just sit there, you're ultimately going to lose it for taxes, so it has to be done one way or the other. So I would encourage you not to give up on that.
We're working on it. It's coming back around to us in a couple of weeks.
Seems like a little education might help, but you need to control the site. It's strategically located in the center of town and the future of the commercial vitality of downtown depends on your success here. The good news is you can get it. Remember, we all appreciate the, not really appreciate, but we're dealing with the pain that Governor Brown caused us by killing off the redevelopment agencies. But in this case, you still have this asset that you can put to good use in the future. So I highly recommend you continue in that regard.
Are there any other questions with regard to the financial side? Okay, before we start on the next one, let's take about seven minutes off.
If I might...
Sorry, one more question.
If I might say one more thing.
Sure.
As you probably all individually appreciate, this was a Herculean effort to put together, to gather the data, get it to us, because we had never seen it before, dive into it, organize and put this report together. And frankly, there are three people we want to thank publicly that without their help we couldn't have got this done. And we, they shed as much blood and sweat and tears as we did, and specifically that's Teresa Gallivan, Linda Wortman and Trish Munoz. They deserve extra credit, so when you see them in the hall, say hi and say thanks. We appreciate them. And if there are any other questions you have about us, we're here and we can answer them. I think one more here.
I don't have a question, I just have a statement. Thank you very much for your presentation and the way that it's, it's laid out here. I'm glad we went page by page. I think we all feel like we have a better understanding of each individual property and the loans that it entails. The one thing I'm still having difficulty reconciling in my own brain is in regards to the refinancing. It seems as though LHCDC was taking from one pot to give to another, which doesn't seem like a sustainable model and I'm just really encouraging staff to figure out where, you know, maybe we weren't aware that that was not proper management of these funds, perhaps, but let's find where that ball was dropped and let's make sure that that is something that we have written into contracts. That seems like one of the largest things at this point that I, that I picked up. So, thank you.
Okay, seven-minute break and we'll come back and we'll work on compliance. We will now be starting on page twelve.
By the way, I want to ask Ray a question for you. Ray, how many units do you manage in the state of California? Not complexes, but units.
Probably fifty to seventy-five thousand. We've managed many.
I ask a question just so you know that she knows something about this subject.
We've just developed a, an application to help us manage that a little more efficiently.
How many are in compliance?
We have a pretty high level of compliance, actually. Yeah.
It seems really nice, but you're out of compliance.
I think we need to hire her. We really need to hire you.
I'm the good cop. The staff is, you know, they tend to be the bad cop, so they lay the hammer down. So, I'm ready when you are.
Starting out with page twelve.
Okay. So these, the properties go in the same order, basically that the financial properties, the financial part of the report goes in. So Property One is South K Cottage, one twenty to one twenty and a half, South K Street. The compliance status, basically what I, what I did here was provide the basic loan information. I think the financial summary was more comprehensive with regards to the loan information. This is basically for the monitoring, strictly for the monitoring information. So with that, the information that we gleaned from the files indicated the compliance status below, we broke that down by year. So from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and one, there was no documentation in the file with regards to the monitoring. Two thousand and two, there was no response to the requests from the RDA, so they had findings and did not receive responses. Two thousand and three shows compliant. Two thousand and four, there was no response. Two thousand and five, compliant. Two thousand and six, no response to findings and compliant in two thousand and seven and then through two thousand and eight to two thousand and eleven, the property was non-compliant or gave no response to findings.
Any questions on number one? Councilmember Starbuck.
Compliancey like this, does this require inspecting the inside of these units or is this drive-by property inspection? Does this satisfy the demand?
With respect to the covenants for RDA, there is, there was, there's no required monitoring for the actual physical component. It just, the, the covenant states that they're to be maintained within the HQS guidelines. So that...
HQS?
The HQS is the Housing Quality Standards established by HUD to show a, for health and safety purposes, that the, the apartment units or homes are livable and up to quality standards for the affordable housing tenants. So with the covenants that you had for RDA, there were no, there are no specific requirements for monitoring. So I think the drive-bys that they were doing were in response to concerns that they were hearing in the community and also to track the rehab that was being done on the, on the properties.
Now, what are the requirements for CDBG?
CDBG and HUD, they do require physical inspections and those would have been, fallen under the Home Consortium and the CDBG. However, we did not find any information in the files for CDBG monitoring. There was a, there was an agreement that was entered into, I believe it was in, I want to say two thousand and seven, for a three-year period and then renewed for another three-year term, but there was nothing in the files with regards to the monitoring.
So, is a general statement, would I be correct if I said that typically the CDBG monitoring of covenants is more stringent than the redevelopment agencies was?
Yes, and then the home would be most restrictive. The, just to, to further your question about the, the maintenance monitoring, home requires one, two or three-year property maintenance inspection based on the number of units and file reviews. So they did, they did their monitoring, I believe they were set for every other year and then they went, I think in two thousand and eight, they started monitoring on a yearly basis because they weren't getting responses to their findings.
And to be non-compliant, it could be a failure to turn in paperwork or it could be a failure to maintain units. Either one would make you non-compliant.
Not so much the, the physical aspect, it's more for the tenant rent and income limits. So they are required to report annually each of the restricted, each of the tenant information living in the restricted units. So if there were eleven restricted units, those tenants, they needed to prove that they were within the, the rent and income limit. So they were not being overcharged in rent and they were not, their income did not exceed the income limit for that year.
And is there some consideration of utilities and some other things in those also?
There is. And, and there's, if they pay utilities, it reduces the amount of the total portion of the tenant rent.
So principally, the reason they would be non-compliant was that they didn't turn in complete documentation?
I think for the most part. There were instances where we found that there were people, there were tenants that were out of those rent and income limits, but for the most part, I think it was lack of response and, and lack of turning in the reports.
And when you say out, they, they earned too much to live there or they were being...
Charged too much rent.
They were being charged too much rent. Okay. Councilmember Martner, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I find it shocking that you are telling us that there is no documentation in the city of Lompoc's CDBG office, I don't know what else to call it. The Community Development Department had no documentation regarding compliance reports. And I tell you why it's shocking, because I came into this seat four years ago, I took on this subject and I was told that they were being done. I was told by city employees, city staff that, yes, we're doing all our compliance requirements per, every year, but now we have an independent consultant here telling us there is no records. It's shocking. It is shocking.
And to that respect, there may, the, the county consortium, I can't imagine that they did not do the monitoring on the county side, but they did not maybe request copies or they didn't receive copies of that monitoring.
But wouldn't you expect that if you work in this city and you manage CDBG funding, wouldn't you expect, would you please send me a copy of that report so I can put it in my file? Because by the way, the community may ask, by the way, a council member may ask.
Right. And the, and the Home Consortium, there were, there were copies on the home side. It was just, for some reason, there, there is nothing in the CDBG. I don't know.
Could, could the city administrator please respond to this in some way? Why this didn't happen? It is in the last four years.
Councilmember Martner, I don't have the answer for why that happened. That's something that we have been trying to look into. That's why we're doing this exercise, to find out what we do need to do in the going-forward process.
And city administrator, I, I mean, this is a public meeting and I, I am very close to reminding you of a conversation that you and I had where you told me we do have the records, we do have pictures, and now I'm being told we don't. They're, they're not there. So to me, that's, that's a difficult, very difficult thing to, to, to accept. I find it very difficult and very, very disappointing. I'd like to thank RDA very much. I'd like to thank Linda Wortman because you did your job. You really did your job. Thank you. And I don't have any words to say about the Community Development Department at this point in time because it is shocking. It is shocking to find out that there is no records on something that this council, I myself asked for it, and I was told, we've done it. We do it every year. I don't have any words. I don't know, I don't know what to say.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. This will apply, I believe, to every property listed here in the compliance review that you have. It goes up through two thousand and eleven. So my question is, is who is monitoring these covenants now in two thousand and twelve? Are they being monitored? Are they, are the reports being created and written? What's the status right now? What's our responsibility?
They should be, continue to be monitored because the covenants are in effect. I believe Linda's team did a drive-by in two thousand and twelve to go, actually I think they went door-to-door to make an assessment because they did not receive reports. So I think that was their effort to try to cover for two thousand and twelve because they weren't receiving anything with respect to reports. I did not see anything in the files for two thousand and twelve from the county, so...
What about for HUD though? Is that only in regards to the RDA covenants that you did that? So who's responsible? We, you know, our, our employee that was there is no longer there, she's at the county. So whose responsibility is that to be getting those compliance reports?
Again, I believe you're still a part of the Home Consortium, so that would be the county Home Consortium that is responsible for the monitoring for the properties that they have an interest in, I believe.
But there are certain properties that we have an interest in that they do not.
Right.
So that falls under our jurisdiction and our responsibility to be getting that.
Correct. And that's where we made the recommendation to do the overall matrix. I know that the, the successor agency, I should say now, has a matrix for the RDA covenants. Our recommendation to do an overall matrix to incorporate everything because again, your home units are going to be more restrictive. There may be some differences where you have less restrictions for home than you do for the RDA covenants, but there's a way to manage that. So, but the key is determining the most restrictive and how you go forward, trying to layer those, we call it layering, layer the monitoring.
Yeah, that should, that should really go for all, not just, you know, LHCDC stuff, but really all loans, outstanding loans.
And it avoids confusion overall because when you're reporting to three different entities, so if there's one property, they have CBG, they have home, they have RDA, they're reporting to three different entities and it gets very confusing. So, you know, but again, our recommendation to try to bring that all under one umbrella and it, it's a little more comprehensive for both sides, actually.
Okay, so in the last year, we've, I don't want to say we failed, but maybe we failed yet again because we should have been doing this monitoring in two thousand and twelve. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions with regard to property number one? And property number two, which is page fourteen?
Okay, property number two is Mark's House at two oh three North End Street and there were three different covenants for the CDBG home and, home state and home county. Compliance status, nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and four, we find that there's no documentation. Two thousand and five, for the home annual reports, there's no documentation that's pretty consistent throughout two thousand and eleven. The, the annual reports that were not being submitted and that's for your rent and income limits. For the home program, we found, now these are county determinations, there was no documentation, nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and four, inadequate documentation, two thousand and five, two thousand and six was not required. And two thousand and seven, they were in compliance. Two thousand and eight, they were within limits and these are findings that were pulling directly from the county report. Let's see, in two thousand and nine, there was no final documentation from the county found in files. So in other words, I think there were findings, but there was no final documentation to show a determination whether it was compliant or non-compliant. And then two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, no documentation. Being that these had home covenants, there were property HQS, the Housing Quality Standards that were required, again, that goes in line with nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and four, no documentation. In two thousand and five, that they found that they were meeting and exceeding the requirements. Two thousand and five, not required, again, because they were reporting, they were monitoring every other year. Two thousand and seven, they were maintaining the minimum standards. Two thousand and eight, they had concerns and again, going back to my statement, after two thousand and eight, they started reporting or monitoring annually due to the fact they did not receive or were not receiving responses to their concerns. There was no final documentation in two thousand and nine and no documentation found for two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven.
Okay, so in, just talking about the layering, because here's a perfect example where you have three different loans. The home county one would be the most restrictive?
Home state, home is going to be the same regardless of whether it's state or county.
Okay. So if the monitoring were performed by the home, on the, of the home funds by the county, that would then backfill the others if, if your system was set up right?
Correct.
Okay. So you wouldn't really do it three times, you'd do it once and it would backfill the other ones?
Right. You just want to make sure that you're covering all of your restrictions.
You're just going to photocopy it and put it in the other two files, basically?
Absolutely.
Got it, okay. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. So, but... Thank you, Marilyn. So, but I'm confused, because even if you are fulfilling the most strict requirements, it still says no documentation. Is that correct?
Correct.
So even in the beginning of the compliance status, from 1997, there was no documentation?
Correct.
Not only that, but the site visits ended in 2007, that's the last comment we have, which would lead us to believe that there's been no site visits officially recorded since 2007.
Right. Now, the site visits that are referenced in the report are based on the drive-by site visits that were done by the RDA. So being that there was no RDA money or covenants on this property, they probably dropped off.
Okay, I want to interrupt you really quickly. Can I get a statement from Linda? My apologies to interrupt.
Redevelopment did not monitor this project, because there was no RDA funds in the project. So it, the site visits had to have been done by CDPG staff.
Do we know why they stopped in 2007?
Perhaps because the county took over the compliance requirements of the consortium. I'm not quite sure.
Is that what took place in 2007?
The agreement, they entered into the agreement in 2007.
But the county, if they did provide documentation, we don't have it.
Correct. Correct.
But even still, what I don't understand is if there's no documentation, how is HUD not saying something to us already about this?
And that's where I go back to, I can't imagine that, I don't want to make any assumptions, but I can't imagine that the county did not do monitoring, it's just not reflected in the files, that there's no copies of that monitoring in the files.
Okay.
So, I mean, they could probably be requested by, from county?
That's a staff, that is a suggestion. I would say not just this property, but any property in regards to consortium documents, where the city has an investment in that property, we need to get those documents and fill these files with all the documentation on each property. Because I would agree, because you would think that HUD would have done something by now if they weren't getting anything. But, you know, this is still inadequate.
How, I'm sorry. Councilmember Martner, go ahead.
Yes, I mean, the point is, I mean, we're talking about doing a photocopy of some report in the county. Could somebody tell me what office I can go tomorrow morning, myself, and request for that report? I would like to do it. I would like to, tomorrow, get on my car, go to the county and say, would you please give me a copy of the compliance reports? Because the city staff didn't provide us with a copy, but it should be available. It should be very easy to do. Can somebody give me that information right now? Where do I go tomorrow morning and answer the question whether those reports exist? The inspector general's desk? Well, maybe that's a good point, and maybe I will have to go and talk to the inspector general, because, I mean, come on, you know, there are years of no documentation here. Okay, let's say that, you know, CDPG staff didn't bother to call the county to, could you please fax us a Xerox copy of the report? I'd like to go tomorrow and find out, because as Councilmember Costa says, it's been years. I would think that HUD would have raised a flag already and would have audited the county by default. So there's got to be a report somewhere. Can somebody tell me where can I go tomorrow morning and get a copy?
I have the agreement to me to pull the document.
Can we, as a council, ask, would you please, city staff, get on the phone tomorrow and ask for the records? And please put it in every council member's desk by tomorrow 5:00 PM. It should not be that difficult. They can fax it over.
That would be the County of Santa Barbara subdivision, CDPG subdivision.
Okay, I would like to ask the staff, can we do that? And if it takes three votes, I would like to ask the council right now to direct the staff to obtain those records.
I think we probably need those records for the file, but I think tomorrow afternoon might be a little optimistic.
Okay, 48 hours? Today is November 20?
Thursday is Thanksgiving.
Oh, okay. So Monday, let's go for Monday. Monday, 5:00 PM.
Again, I think with the holiday and everything...
Tuesday, 5:00 PM. I am not quitting until we get a date.
How about if we go for Wednesday? I think that's adequate.
Wednesday noon. Can we get, can we get a file with a Xerox copy of all the, I mean, I don't even care the records. I want to know whether there are reports in the county office.
You have them in your hand?
I like you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we have a member of the public for the record to providing us the information.
I had previously come up to the council, and I had given some reports for everybody on the council to read. They were where a lot of that information is, and I directed you that on the county website, all the reports are there. I'm looking at project monitoring, and it says, seen as how the 207, 208 program year reporting period was the first year the CDPG program was administered through the urban county, monitoring of the CDPG-funded project has not yet taken place. However, the county is aware of the monitoring requirements for the CDPG program, and is in the process of creating a monitoring plan that encompasses all the programs administered and monitored by the county. But they have a whole website that you can find everything on.
Okay, so...
I did mention that before.
So would the city staff then go to that website, and maybe we don't even need to call the county? Can the city staff go to that website and provide those records for us?
And rather than killing a whole bunch of trees, how about if they went to the, what gave us each the link, and we could go look?
I think for the purpose of clarity, there is a need for the city to have the records. There is a need for the city to have the records. Not links to websites for council members to go and look at it. The city needs to have the records. So when, in the future, 50 years down the road, we hire urban futures again, they'll be able, yes, they'll be able to say, we found the documentation on the records, and they won't be telling us there is no documentation.
I agree with you with regard to having a copy. I just don't want us to kill five trees. One tree for each of us, so...
Marilyn?
Yes.
I think that this is obviously one good example, when we're talking about a policy, right? This is one thing that we'd want to be included in a policy, that even if we are not the lead agency, that, you know, there is still some requirement that city must obtain records and have accurate and full records for every property that we have an investment in.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so if you'll be kind enough, staff folks, to give, get one set that could be held over in Teresa's part of the world, that any council member could come and review if they wished, and also give us all the links so we could go look, without having to sit and look at the hard copies, that would be good. And by next Wednesday at noon, everybody good with that? Got two nods, three nods? Oh, three's enough. Okay. So what you're saying, basically, is with regard to these questions, where the county is, it's not necessarily that they didn't do the work, it's that we don't have a copy of the work, and that to keep out of trouble with HUD, they probably did the work.
And again, that's an assumption, but I think it's a pretty clear assumption, they, someone has to be doing the monitoring, or you're going to be hearing from HUD, so...
Okay, and with regard to those documents, because I noticed frequently, as I was looking, that the older documents just didn't exist, how long are we supposed to keep those?
On our side, we keep them for the term of the covenant, so...
30 years?
Yes. Again, a recommendation was going to electronic files, which we have been doing on our side as well. The paper is very cumbersome, and it's, you know, if someone pulls it out of the file, it doesn't exist anymore. So we recommend, we have started scanning, we've gone through a huge scanning process with your staff as well. So keeping those documents electronically, it's, they're much easier to manage, they're much easier to access, and it's, there's a little, pretty transparent, as long as people have access to those files, so...
Several terabytes.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other questions with regard to number two? And number three?
Number three, Portobello Apartments, 305 to 309 North K Street. Let's see, 2000 to 2002, there was rehabbing process, so there was no reporting required. 2003, under RDA, we find that the property was in compliance from 2003 to 2005. Again, there were no home annual reports, no documentation found. And then the home program, no documentation. 2000 to 2002, again, the property was under rehab. There was no final documentation found in the files with regards to the county's findings, so that would mean that there were concerns that were issued, written concerns, but LHCDC did not respond to those concerns, or the county did not provide a final, their final finding, or there's not a copy of the final finding in the file. Let's see, 2005, compliant with RDA, no home annual report, home program inadequate documentation, and the property standards were above minimum. 2006, the property was vacant, I believe it was for rehab, and so there was no reporting required, as well as 2007. 2008 through 2011, for RDA, there were not findings of noncompliance or no responses. And I think that continues on through the monitoring for the home program as well.
And with regard to the 2008 to 2010 period, again, that was not that nothing was submitted, it's that it was incomplete. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Right. For, based on what we saw for the RDA, there was a determination of noncompliance. That would either mean that they didn't report, or they did not, they were not within the limits. So there was an issue of noncompliance, whether it had to do with the rent and income limits, or non-response or non-reporting.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. The period of time that elapsed between the covenant start date and the issuance of the first loan in 2000, and the actual progress of construction beginning in 2006, my assumption would be that there was a six-year lapse, because they were attempting to find other funding for the project? Is there any record? Okay, just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Any other questions on number three? Number four?
Number four, K Street Apartments, 328 through 330 North K Street. 2001 through 2003, we found a documentation. 2004, 2005, there was no response. 2006 through 2011, noncompliance or no response.
Any questions on number four? Councilmember Costa.
Sorry, Marilyn, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. If they've been compliant since 2006, or, excuse me, if they've been noncompliant since 2006 on the RDA loan, what, and Linda, you may be able to answer this, what were the actions that were taken?
That's exactly my question.
We sent multiple letters, requests, had meetings, trying to get them to even initially certify the property. And there was disagreements about the rent amounts, according to redevelopment affordability standards, and they just would not respond and would not provide the documentation required.
So, right, but I'm wondering, at that point, if you're not in compliance for that long, there's no way for us to attempt to get the money back? I know it sounds oversimplified, but...
The loan was repaid.
The loan was repaid at that point?
Yes. RDA went in on this property with acquisition, and we were taken out very early in the project. And so we had no, you know, no teeth, we had no big club of threatening a default. All we had was trying to work with them to get into compliance. And the real problem was lack of documentation and refusal to provide the information.
So there, again, I would say lies another question about policy. Is there anything we can write into a policy that would give us some recourse when something like this happens?
I think that we have taken those steps now, whereas any time a borrower is noncompliant with a city, another city department or division, or code enforcement, so now we're talking more, and we won't move forward. So, like, the CDPG could come in and say, okay, no more additional funds. So we are, we have taken some of those steps, but it's not a written policy.
Right. So I think for me, not only on this property, but with, it's agency-specific, right? So if they weren't out, if they were out of compliance in 2006 for this property, they shouldn't have been given money for another property, regardless of its compliance. So that is where I think we need to put that into a policy, you know, that communication, it sounds like it's taking place now, that's great, needs to make sure that it continues department to department, agency-specific, not just property-specific. Thank you.
Can I, just to, mind if I ask a question? City attorney, I think that item that was passed quite some time ago now links all of them together. So if you're noncompliant with one, you can't draw money in any other portion of the city. It's my recollection.
The Human Services Commission?
Yeah, but it was all-inclusive. If you were noncompliant in one part of the city, you couldn't draw money from any other fund. It was my recollection.
I remember the Human Services Commission policy that came to the city, and the city agreed, and so any of those CDPG monies would not go unless someone was totally compliant with all contracts.
Thank you. Councilmember Martner?
Thank you. I guess I need to get, you know, this is a very good point, because we start seeing that year after year, there is noncompliance and nothing is happening. So it's actually really surprising to me that the government has not taken care of this. Now, where, first question number one, whose responsibility is to make this organization be compliant? Is it RD, well, in this case, is it RDA, or is it HUD, is it federal funds? Where does the responsibility lie, as to who has to make sure that the properties are compliant, and that there is some form of enforcement? I guess the right word is enforcement.
I think it goes back to your covenant. So it's going to be the body who's responsible for the monitoring, the biggest component, and we've run into this on several occasions with numerous of our clients. If there's no recourse written into the covenant, you really, as Linda said, you have no teeth. So the body that's monitoring really has no recourse. So all they can do is continue to, you know, go after them.
...
Yeah. What we have found with one of our larger clients, what they're doing, they have people coming to them now for NOFA money. So what they're doing is going back and looking at a five-year history, and they are working with them. If you can bring these years into compliance, because they have HUD, they have federal money, state money involved, then we will give you additional funds. If you can't, you get no more funds, and we're going to foreclose on the property. So there, you really have to have the recourse written into your covenants, make amendments, whatever it is that you need to do. But you need to give your monitoring component a little bit of teeth, so that they have recourse when people are not reporting.
If I may, through the mayor, a covenant is similar to an agreement. So from a legal perspective, there is a remedy. It's not an easy remedy, but you would go into court and find someone... It's not an easy remedy, but you would go into court and find someone and have a court determine that someone's breached a contract. And although there wouldn't be any monetary damages that would be recovered, because you don't have a loan maybe that's still applicable, but there are civil remedies that are available to force someone to do something to the point of where you get a court order that says, do it. If they don't do it, then there's a contempt of court on the people who are responsible for doing it. I'm not saying that's a, a practical solution, but I want to make sure you understand, even if the covenant does specifically say, we're going to take your first child, the covenant still has teeth. It's just how we enforce that is not necessarily easy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you're basically saying this city never took that step, or the county for that matter in many of the situations, to actually take these cases to court. Understandably so, because perhaps the expense, right? And not the most practical way of doing it. So it goes back to really setting a policy in place and say, you know, this is just not going to happen. And, and what it really particularly bothers me, because it was, it was brought up during the break by a member of the public, that there is a correlation between, in this report and what is being reported, that all the properties that became noncompliant in that year, within a year, they were refinanced. Okay, now, that's an interesting correlation, I don't know why, but within a year, properties went out of compliance and then they were refinanced. So there was some mechanism by which they could refinance. Who was allowing the refinancing of noncompliant properties? I don't know. I, I don't know that. And, and, and I, is there, I mean, is that even legal? I guess it is, if it's not written in the covenants specifically.
Well, again, it depends on the refinance. If you're saying that the refinancing is going to, we're going to end up continuing with agency or city funding, then the city may have more ability to, or the agency may have more ability to not allow that refinancing. If the refinancing is, is buying out, if you will, the agency or city's loans, then the refinancing isn't necessarily as critical for the purpose of the covenant.
Case in point, the one that we just discussed, the $335,000. They did pay the RDA loan, um, but they weren't, you know, that, that was actually approved by the council back in 2005 or 2006, but that property was noncompliant. However, the council, or according to the city staff report, it was refinanced, and one of the loans was paid, RDA, but not the CDBG loan. I mean, wouldn't you think that there would be some mechanism to say, you know, we cannot refinance in good faith a property that is noncompliant? Right?
Yeah, I guess the question, if you don't mind, um, City Attorney, if, let's assume that, um, it doesn't matter whether it's this, this property holder or someone else, we have some, some loans in place, and they choose to go to a private lender and pay off our loans. Do we have the ability to tell them, you can't do that?
Not pay off the loan, we, we can't force them not to pay off the loans, but if there were covenants recorded, we still have the ability to enforce the covenants.
Right, but to her point that you've kind of lost your teeth at that point, when you...
Your teeth are shorter.
Okay.
I thought the lawyers had really long teeth.
So basically, if they choose to, to pay off a loan and seek alternate financing, then they have the ability to do that, and then our recourse from then on is the covenant.
Again, it depends on what the, the documents say, but if the refinancing is merely just to take out the, all, no equity results, the money is just taken out to pay off the city loans or the agency loans, um, then, and they go through a private lender to do that, there isn't a whole lot the city or the agency could do to prohibit that, unless the covenant says they can't do it, but it's unlikely the covenant would say that.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be unlikely, just to add to that, and, and part of the conversation with respect to, actually where I started in my presentation regarding is, that the fact that it's, it's going to be potentially more difficult to get compliance, but not impossible. Uh, one of the things, in terms of a tactic, is that your counsel needs to be in total solidarity with respect to getting compliance. And, uh, the experience I have in circumstances just like this is to introduce the new owner to the city attorney. His attorneys are very good at writing letters explaining what's going to happen to them if they don't behave. That in every instance got them in the office to talk it over, bring them up to speed. So I never failed in that respect, never, never, I have a case that actually went to a lawsuit, but a well-worded letter from the city attorney advising them what the alternative is. And basically, it is a lawsuit, they can be required to perform, they can be required to show documents. There is a financial aspect of charging too much rent, for example, for a period of time that can be proven up. Uh, so the, the noncompliance of the, uh, the covenant, depending on what it is, could have some consequence financially to them. Uh, there could be a lis pendens, and all kinds of bad things can happen to them if they don't behave. But if they're just dealing with staff, and let's just say your council's divided, well then, well, why should I do anything? I'll just send in papers and claim I don't know anything. So you stay together as a group, and if it gets to that point, you get a nice letter from the city attorney. Next thing you know, things are happening. That's a little different than the staff being able to say, you're in default under this note, we're going to foreclose on you. Because in some cases, because of what's happened, that's not going to be what you can do going forward, but it doesn't mean you can't get compliance. In fact, you will get compliance. You're going to get it. You just have to be steadfast and go after it.
So let me ask you a question with regard to number four. The county home was put in place in December of '03, and the city CDBG came along later. So would we have expected in that case that the county was, because they had the home and that was the more stringent, that they would have been performing the monitoring going forward? Is that, would that be a reasonable expectation?
You're, you're talking about in a, in a future?
No, just in this one in the past, where the county signed on in 12 of '03, and, you know, you mentioned earlier that the home was the more stringent than CDBG. Would there have been a reasonable expectation on the part of our staff, say in 2005, going forward, that the county was monitoring this, and that may not, may have been a reason why we weren't going out and monitoring it, when, that the shortfall was, we should have been getting those documents from the county to put in our file?
I mean, and that's an assumption that can be made, I, I believe, but there's still a, there would still be a responsibility on the CDBG side, at least...
To get the documents and look at them, make sure they're complete.
Exactly, and to make sure that they fall within their restrictions are being met for the CDBG.
Absolutely, okay. Are there any other questions on number four? Number five.
Number five is Chestnut Apartments, 401 to 405 West Chestnut. This was an RDA covenant, um, 2000 to 2002, they did not receive any responses to their requests, um, RDA did not receive responses from LHCDC with respect to their requests for reports. They were compliant from 2003 to 2006, and from 2007 to 2011, they were either noncompliant or non-responsive. And if I may speak to this, and there, there seemed to be, um, in looking at the documentation, the communications, there was a period of time where there was certain staff on the LHCD side that was doing the reporting, and I think that maybe that staff was no longer there after a certain point. And so maybe, again, the knowledge wasn't there for the reporting, so they just didn't respond, or didn't know what they were doing with the compliance. So going back to, again, the recommendations, what Steve was saying earlier with respect to training, it's so important to make sure that when there is turnover with the property management, that the people are sufficiently trained to understand, because it's not rocket science, obviously, but there, there is, there are certain nuances for the, the reporting there with required, with respect to the, the limits, calculations, the type of source documentation that's required to verify income and what have you. So, um, there's, it's not, like I said, not difficult, but there is a lot of steps to take. So, it, it may have been, in looking back when some of that, when that staff fell off, maybe that's some of the reasoning that they were so noncompliant for so long.
Just to, to make, how many pieces of paper would there be in a file dealing with one individual for a year to, to have a compliant file for just one, one tenant?
I believe that, you guys, the staff is using a, a home survey form, and I'm not sure how many pages is a home survey, Linda? The one page, and the, but then you have the supporting documentation, however many pay stubs are required to show proof of income, um, for, if there's three adults in the unit, then there would be supporting documentation for those three adults. So it can be anywhere from one document for a home survey, say they have no verifiable income, to, you know, anywhere from up to 20, 30 pieces of paper. It, it can get pretty significant. We have files on our end where we literally receive stacks and stacks of paper for a particular property.
Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you made the comment that it appears that, uh, after a certain year, these properties fell out of compliance. Was that like 2006, 2007, thereabouts?
This, this particular one, as of 2007, became noncompliant.
2007, right. Um, I have a question for the staff. When did the LHCDC acquire the Lompoc Theater? Oh, thank you. Okay, so, so 2006, 2007, things are falling out of compliance, they're acquiring commercial properties. I guess, that's an assumption that I can make. Thank you.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. Um, I'm, my assumption is that this loan was another one that was repaid before it went out of compliance. Okay, I also noticed that this is an RDA loan only, but I don't see any comments from 2012 site visits, but I'm assuming that those are taking place? What did I say, 2012? Um, yes.
2012 would be due March.
March of next year.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions on number five? Number six.
Number six, Casa Contrares Apartments, 434 to 438 North L Street. Um, there was an RDA and a county home covenant. There was rehabilitation, I believe, through 2005. Um, I don't believe it's, there was, there obviously a compliance report submitted for 2004, because they're showing that they were compliant, noncompliant through 2005, from 2005 to 2011. The no, um, home annual report submitted, the home program documentation was not found for 1999 to 2002, um, no final documentation, um, for 2003 from the county, skipping every other year, 2005 was inadequate documentation. They were in compliance with the county, um, for 2007, also showing within limits 2008 and 2009 forward, no documentation.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Throughout this, when I look at it, here the RDA has a 55-year covenant. Home County over here has a 30-year. How are these covenants determined? Why wouldn't they both be 55 or both be 30? And how do you determine now, if you're going to layer, which is going to be the most stringent? And, I mean, you go to property number nine up here, and there's CDBG, CDBG, 30 and 35 on the same property. So who's determining these covenants? It's not based on the monetary amount, certainly.
Right, and, and that's a matter of the covenants being written, I think, I don't know if City Attorney can speak to that, but it's, obviously, they're not looking at the other covenants to see when the, when the terms go, how far the terms go out.
It depends on the, the funding, and it depends on which source. If it's redevelopment agency, redevelopment agency law requires certain periods of time. Those periods of time are different than what are required under the CDBG. Those requirements are different than what are required under the home, and depending upon what the CDB project is, they may have different terms.
So they're all statutory?
Or regulatory, right.
That, that would be correct. And they changed over time, too. Redevelopment law changed in the early 2000s for multifamily housing, from a 15-year affordability covenant to 55, because at the time, the legislature and the governor believed redevelopment agency involvement in affordable housing was an important and essential function for local governments in California. But in 2011, it was determined that that was nonsense, and that should not be done any further. Sorry, Governor Brown. But anyway, that's why you have difference in coverages. So what happens practically is when the other, the lower period of, of compliance expires, the one that remains, like the redevelopment covenants after 2003 and later are 55 years. And so that, that performance still is required.
Yeah, I, I don't want to go jumping way ahead, but if you looked at property number nine, '05 and '06, one year apart, you know, granted, now, there, there is some, you know, monetary difference here, but, you know, I mean, it just, there's no continuity in the covenants that I'm seeing.
Any other questions on number six? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. Um, I know that this would be out of turn, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot, um, but this is, you know, a very unique issue for our community. It seems as though there may be somebody in the audience who has additional information. If, if the mayor would allow, I would ask that you provide that for us, if at all possible, if you're interested. I was just curious, because I, I feel like if I'm missing a piece of the puzzle, I want to make sure I'm looking at it. If it's the county document, um, you know, please let me know. That's all I was asking. Okay. Sorry, I didn't want to put anybody on the spot, just wanted to give you the dice, if you'd like to speak. Thank you.
Okay, number seven.
Number seven is the Volker Apartments, 50504 North T Street. This is a CDBG covenant, and there was no, there was no compliance status findings in the file.
And that was city CDBG only?
Marilyn, I'm curious, um, uh, no compliance status findings found in the file for the CDBG reporting, and again, our assumption is that the county has that information, but we didn't enter into the consortium until 2007, but this loan was recorded in 2002.
2002.
Yeah, and this, this was never a county loan, so they would never have been responsible for this.
Oh, so you're right.
That's why I said, it was city CDBG, it's not consortium.
Right. Oh, okay, so this is an instance where there just simply was no CDBG reporting, as far as we know.
Correct.
But how is that possible, that HUD wouldn't have?
I can't answer that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on seven? Eight.
I'm, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Martner.
Can I go back to number seven?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, so if CDBG had the responsibility to, to provide the monitoring, and it was the responsibility of the city to do it, and they didn't do it, there is no other government agency that oversees? Would it always be HUD? My, my point is, is that where, where does, where does the responsibility, where does it stop? Okay? It is, in this case particularly, was the city's responsibility to enforce the maintenance, and the city didn't do it. Right? So, so then it's an internal problem between the council and the administration and the departments to say, why are you not doing your job? Am I interpreting this correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so, so there's clearly a lack of, um, doing the job around here, I suppose, in this particular case, whether it's the council, city administration, the CDBG manager, whoever. All right.
This loan wasn't repaid, though. Um, I don't know, do you have the loan side, Steve?
It was extinguished by foreclosure.
Yes, it was never repaid.
In 2011.
Yeah.
But the covenant's... So we did have big teeth for this. We could have gone in and said, you're noncompliant, we can foreclose on you. Give us the money back.
Even more concerning for me is the site visits stopped in 2007.
Well, of course, you know, with, with what the actual human cost on all of that, I mean, these individuals are living in, in lighter conditions, correct? But, but just even... But, but just even, you know, I mean, what we're trying to establish here is a system that will do the job that it's supposed to do, right? I mean, that's what we're trying to do. And I cannot overemphasize to the city's staff that there is a responsibility here to do the job. If they don't do it, somebody's got to get fired. At least, that's my experience in any organization that I've worked with. Somebody, if they're not doing their job, they have to be told, you're not doing their job, be retrained, whatever it is, do the job, please. Otherwise, pay the consequences of not doing the job, like we all do. Anyway, so this is a good example, really, because we had the power to exercise and say, become compliant, and it was our, it was the lack of the city leadership, best way to put it, whether it was the council, the city staff, whomever, to actually enforce it. It's a good example, thank you.
Thank you. And now, number eight.
J Apartments, 501 to 513 North S Street and 508 North T Street. There was an RDA covenant and a CDBG covenant. Compliance status, 2002, there was no response to requests for reports. 2003, the RDA determined noncompliance status. 2004 through 2006, they were compliant. 2007 on, noncompliant on, nonresponsive. And no findings in the files for CDBG.
No, this was both, this was city, but then the RDA was repaid in 2006, so they would...
It is also coincidental that it is, again, 2007, when this property became noncompliant, just like the other one.
And again, I just want to confirm, the site visits that are all recorded are, were under the RDA department only?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on number eight? Number nine.
Number nine is North B Street Apartments, 503, 507, and 507 and a half, North B Street, as well as 613 East Maple. These were both CDBG covenants, and again, there were no status, no findings, documentation in the files.
And the second one was paid off, and the first one was still in place? Nine. Yeah, I don't have, that date isn't, you know, it's down here in the text somewhere.
Linda was just pointing out that the 2006 loan paid off the 2005 loan. Correct.
I'm sorry, the two, the, the 91 loan paid off the 2000, or the 2006 loan paid off the 1991 loan? Oh, yeah, refinance. Yep, right here, RF, refinance. So this one paid off this one. Additional money.
Well, paid off that one.
Yeah. So this was probably a rehab. Okay, any other questions with regard to number nine? Number 10 is the vacant lot. Does everybody's, I think we're very well-versed in that one. Does anyone have a question on number 10, the vacant lot? Okay, let's go to number 11.
Number 11, T and College Apartments, 521 to 537 North T Street. There was an RDA Chaffa covenant, an RDA covenant, a home city and two home city loan covenants. There's a note in the file that after 2009, the home consortium was no longer going to be monitoring this property. I'll go back to 2001, 2002. There was no response to the RDA request for reports, no documentation found for home. 2003 through 2007, the RDA had compliant findings, 2008 on noncompliant. And again, after 2009, home consortium was no longer monitoring this property.
After 2009?
Yes, because I believe the county did not have funds associated with the property, so they were no longer monitoring after 2009. They took it out of their group.
So who monitored, then? If the county stopped?
How did we, how did we confirm that they were monitoring them? If we don't, do we have the documentation on this particular property?
Yeah, they do.
There's documentation, there's findings from the county, there's just no final findings. So they're, the county, when they were monitoring, they had concerns that they addressed in writing, they didn't get responses, or they didn't provide the final findings for the file.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martner. Okay. Number 12.
Number 12 is Southern Court Apartments, 709 to 713 Northeast Street. This was an RDA covenant and a home city covenant. And I believe this property was included in the consortium up again, again, up until 2009. 2001 for RDA, we found no compliance status. 2002, there was no response to the request for reports. 2003 through 2005, they were compliant. 2006, noncompliant. 2007, compliant. 2008 on, noncompliant.
How is it that it was included in the county consortium when it was a city home loan? Did they just routinely do all the home?
Yeah, there were, I believe there were three properties, and I don't recall offhand which ones they were, but there were three that the home consortium was monitoring, and they realized, I guess, that they didn't have funding in those properties, and so they sent, in 2008, they sent a notice that they would include it in 2008, and then after 2009, they would no longer be monitoring.
Marilyn?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Costa.
Motion to extend the meeting by an hour.
Yep. And a second?
Second.
Hall in favor, vote. Passes 5-0. I'm sorry, who is the second? Okay, are there any more questions on 12? And number 13.
Number 13 is Courtyard South Apartments, 717 to 721 Northeast Street. This was a CDBG covenant, however, we found no regulatory agreement in the file. And then there was a home and a state, a city and state home covenant. The property was monitored by the consortium, the home consortium, and again, this was one that was eliminated as of 2009 for monitoring through the consortium. And again, no, no reporting for CDBG, did not submit annual home reports, and findings, not always with final findings for the county reporting.
Could you explain state home, just briefly, since that's a...
It's the, I believe this is county. The funds are, they're state funds.
But they're administered by the county?
Right.
The state home funds are program income from a first-time homebuyer program that we had back in 1992, prior to us being in the consortium. We had a direct allocation from the state for home funds, and as loans have repaid, we have used the program income to fund additional affordable housing projects.
But those are administered by us, not by the state?
Yeah, they're strictly city.
Okay.
I have a question. Is it common to have no regulatory agreement for CDBG loans?
No.
Is this the only loan where no regulatory agreement was found?
I believe this was the only one.
Okay. And that loan was not repaid?
Do you have that information, Steve? I don't have it.
The $30,000?
13 Courtyard?
Yes, it was. Both the home and the city CDBG were repaid.
But the city home was not?
City CDBG only.
That's changed over here.
And this was the only one that you found that didn't have the regulatory requirement?
I believe so, yes.
And just so I have an understanding, can you explain very briefly the purpose of a regulatory agreement?
It's the affordability covenant. It contains all of the terms for the monitoring. It gives you the term of the covenant, whether it's 30 years, 15 years, 55 years. It gives you the, the income restrictions. I would say 90% or greater of your covenants are for very low income, 50% area median income, and also your, your rent, affordable rent limits. All the covenants are stated at 30% of the 50% AMI. So it gives you, it provides you with the length of the term, it provides you with the parameters for the affordability for rent and income.
So technically, couldn't HUD come back and contact the city and ask why there isn't a covenant on this property?
Yes.
And technically, because this was, well, it has valid covenants for other purposes, so that means it shouldn't be a high-risk property. Correct, City Attorney?
This is 717, 721. Our previous analysis was it's a low financial liability.
Because there's covenants, there are valid covenants on the property.
Other, yeah.
Right. But even still?
Right.
Thanks.
Yeah, I was just getting ready to say that here we have a 40-year covenant at 30, and why would we even put a regulatory agreement on a $4,300 loan? I mean, we're talking $4,300. That's probably why there is no regulatory agreement.
That's on 14.
629, it's the loan number, up in the upper right, 62497.
Yeah, I think you're looking at 14.
Yeah, we're on 13.
Oh, good grief, make me look bad.
I'm sorry.
It's all right, there's plenty of numbers here. So, any other questions on 13? 14.
14 is Courtyard Apartments, 725, 733 Northeast Street. There was an RDA covenant and a home county covenant. The smaller amount, the 4,302, I think, probably Linda could speak to why there was no covenant there. I think I recall that it was to cover interest, or... Closing costs. We found no documentation in the file from 1997 to 2002. 2003, there were findings issued, but there was no response to the findings. Again, in 2004, they were compliant. In 2005, noncompliant. In 2006, compliant. 2007, noncompliant from 2008 on. And this was, this was included in the home consortium monitoring.
So wait, this is another, oh, no, that was RDA. So this is no regulatory agreement found for RDA in this case?
And it was a small amount.
$4,300.
Yeah, I believe it was closing costs. Was that paid? That was...
Yeah, it was repaid.
And there is a covenant, yeah, valid covenant on this property, anyway, as well.
Number 15.
Number 15, Casa del Desarrollo, and which is a vacant lot, so there was no monitoring...
You know what, we know the vacant lot. I think we'll just go by hand. Number 16.
16 is G and College Apartments, 201 and 207 East College Avenue. There was, there are two home covenants, and there was an RDA inclusionary covenant, so no many, that was invested from the city, or, I'm sorry, from the RDA, but there was an inclusionary covenant that was written on the property. 2004 to 2007, there was no reporting. Based on the schedule that I saw, the groundbreaking was scheduled for 2006. 2008 on, the property was noncompliant. And I believe this was taken over by People Self-Help, the new managers working with Linda's group to provide monitoring documents, reporting documents.
Yeah. People Self-Help took over late 2009? 10?
Currently, People Self-Help have provided redevelopment staff with not only the initial certification, which we have certified, we're working now through the back years when LH CDC was doing the documentation. So I think we're three years in with the certification, and everything's going very smoothly, so within the next week or two, we should be totally up to date with the compliance.
And then, just as a matter of course, once somebody becomes compliant, do we go back and correct these so it says compliant, or were they, are they noncompliant for eternity?
Normally, we would, they would remain noncompliant for that year, but because this project was never initially certified, and because People Self-Help is now the managing partner, we're going to show certification for People Self-Help.
Seems more fair.
Since they're providing that documentation.
Yeah.
And that's basically a matter of policy, what the, what the city's policy is.
So with some of these others, if, if they weren't compliant, and then they straightened it out, it would still show noncompliant?
Based on your policy.
Okay. Any other questions on 16? Okay. 17.
17 is H and Ocean, which is the Old Town Lompoc Plaza, 107 Ocean Avenue, and there's no certification required, obviously.
Okay, that was vacant commercial property that was repaid. Okay, and then 18 is the theater. I think we're probably infinitely familiar with that. Is there any question with regard to the theater from anyone? No? Okay. I think the next step would be to go to recommendations, which are on page. I know I read them. What page are they on?
You want to test this? You want to go through? Do we just read through?
You guys can fight over who gets to talk about those.
Can I just have the...
So basically, develop a monitoring, monitoring matrix that lists the most restrictive ones, hence, all the other ones would be covered. Page five, at the bottom, recommendations, and then page six.
Right, and as I mentioned before, the matrix serves a couple of purposes. It helps to identify the obvious... It helps to identify the, obviously, the most restrictive covenants. It also shows, it's going to show you at a glance your terms, your restriction requirements, pretty straightforward across the board. Your, your income levels and your rent levels are pretty straightforward. They all pretty much match up. But it'll also eliminate confusion with reporting to several different agencies, and you also start to build a rapport with the people that you're working with. So there's free to answer questions, you know, they feel a little more, in my experience, when you have someone who's working with that person frequently and regularly, you tend to get better results, so.
I just wanted to point out that, yeah, that that matrix is a fantastic idea, and although I understand it is essentially categorized per property, they should then be, not subcategorized, but additionally categorized per agency to help with what we were discussing before, which is if one property's out of compliance, you're going to stop from, you know, granting monies to a different property.
One thing I would like to point out is the redevelopment agency currently has such a matrix for all of its properties, as well as electronic files. So we have the process and the procedures in, currently, all we would need to do is incorporate the CDBG and the home loans into our existing matrix.
I think that, yeah, that's definitely what needs to happen, not just on its own right, but in connection with RDA. So like you're saying, you can see all the requirements on one matrix. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? At this time, I'd like to open for public comment. Go ahead, Councilor Starbuck.
Just real quick, I, when do we get a final copy of this?
Well, they were waiting for us to add things to their.
If I remember correctly, we're going to do it next Wednesday by twelve noon.
I hope you do it.
No, actually, as soon as possible, we'd like to give you one on Monday, and we still have an open invitation, and we may have some further comments from staff that will incorporate. Yours truly being imperfect, as I am, caught some of my own typos, so I will correct those. And so you'll have a final copy available next week. We hope to be available at least as a PDF by Monday, and we'll ship you some bound printed copies as well.
Very, yeah, I know how it is when you work in t-shirts and jeans, so. Yeah. One of the other questions I had here, did any of these loans stand out as something that looks like we're going to wind up having some type of reimbursement on them? Did anything?
Let Steve answer that.
You know, it's hard to say how that might go. I think there was some communication with respect to one case that we were unaware of, but apparently HUD may have had some concern about one loan. At least there was an article in the newspaper about that. I'm completely ignorant of the specifics of it, but it may very well be. I think in cases where, let's say, a CDBG, a related covenant, for example, was, was, or the loan was wiped out and through a foreclosure, and the city, through one function or another, maintains ownership of the site, you can always replace that covenant if you need to. So I think you can satisfy those concerns, because what, although these particular financial transactions were structured as loans, which is proper, by the way, you could have structured them as grants if you wanted to. And then the only issue remaining is what do you get in terms of affordability compliance, which will be a little bit more of a challenge, but I think if there's, and I detect solidarity here, so I think you'll be able to get that done on a going-forward basis. You have to look at one, each case depends on what the issues are, and you need to explain the situation and see what happens. That's possible, there could be some disallowances, but that's yet to be determined, if at all.
Thank you.
That probably didn't help much, but you have to fight each battle when it comes and hope that you don't have any.
Now, we have one, but we knew that going in. Councilmember Lingo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You indicated that you were involved in six different RDAs.
Yes. I was the executive director of six.
Okay. And, I'm sorry, I.
Right.
You, you control or work with how many different?
I asked her that question, and her division manages about eighty thousand apartment units statewide. For compliance purposes, not management for collecting rent.
Correct, yeah. Well, my question is, as I heard several times from Ms. Martner, she's shocked. No, we're all concerned about this, but in your opinion, how unusual is this for the cities you've worked with? I mean, is this way out there in left field, like, you know?
No, I've stepped into cities where there were irregular procedures implemented. In most cases, let me think about this, and frankly, all the cases, it was out of ignorance. There was lack of staff training and understanding how things like this go. Today, we would actually, we deliver with a boa on top, a complete desk manual to cities that want to have a new program. They set the parameters, and we create everything they need to do to set up all the loans, monitor all the loans, take care of everything they need to do to make sure their portfolio is managed. And a lot of that simply comes from experience over time. But this, the fact that you have unevenness with respect to staff response is not an unusual thing in itself. It's a, you obviously are aware of this now, and you are aware of a way to cure it. We highly recommend that you proceed in that fashion. There's more than one way to do it. We suggested maybe using an outside entity, but you don't have to do that. What's important is you perform your responsibilities in this respect in a uniform and thorough manner. And that can be done with the hundred-and-seventy-one covenants. That's not trying to surmount a tall mountaintop, so to speak. So you have a lot of that already in place. We suggested a few other techniques you might consider. So that way, on a going-forward basis, this doesn't, you don't have to revisit this. Now, with respect to the entire package, it, I think you will find it better to have more than one owner going forward.
Explain that.
So if one owner, for example, experiences some kind of external financial collapse that results in their lack of performance against a covenant, they don't all have that same circumstance. Because looking at the information that we found and we put it on our report, it's, you can clearly see that at a certain year, things started to go downhill. We don't know why, but it did. And we don't know what was in people's hearts over this, but the lack of responsiveness at a particular point in time is pretty obvious. So when you have all your eggs in one basket, then you have this, this complete portfolio collapse that you've experienced. So going forward, you're not going to have that circumstance. You're going to have different players. And if you have a problem client, then you can work it out individually and not have to deal with all of them at once.
Okay. This evening, we're going to be making some decisions, decisions will be based on your recommendations. Earlier, you had, one of the things you had mentioned, you were giving some compliments to the staff for some of the details that they have. In your opinion, if we follow your recommendations, do we have, in your opinion, do we have the staff that can do this? I mean, if we don't go for the RFP to get an outside agency to do it? I know you're, I'm kind of putting you on the spot, but.
Well, that's a different assignment. We weren't asked to do that. I mentioned what I, what we can do as an entity to help cities establish everything they need to run a program, including compliance. We were not asked to do that.
Okay, that's fair.
So I have no, there's no way for me to judge the capabilities of your staff. Now, with respect to what we asked them to do for us to help us do this, they were extraordinarily helpful, very kind people, and it was a privilege to work with them.
Okay. So then, I'm going in reverse to this, so I should not infer by your recommendation that we go out for an RFP. I should not take that and assume that you're saying that we do not have the inside?
If, if I were in your shoes, what I would ask your city administrator to do is to consider these matters and review your staffing levels, consider the amount of work that's necessary, to assess whether or not the resources within the city are sufficient to manage this through a force account. And if that is a possibility, that certainly needs to be identified. And as is the custom, usually in a lot of your staff reports that go forward, options are mentioned, and then the pros and cons are weighed against one another. Another option is to look at contracting out, and that could be looked at as well, or if that's not the preference, not to do it at all. The bottom line is that you get, you get the compliance you want. It can be done either way or through a combination of the two. So it just depends on what it is you need to do to be able to get compliance restored in Lompoc.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I would like to propose an idea to council, perhaps.
We haven't had public comment yet.
Well, this is something that the public can comment on as well. This is sort of just an idea in listening to you speak. Perhaps we, if the funds are available, we can extend the contract with Urban Futures through the process of getting the policy established and, and training certain staff that may need the training. Or if it's not Urban Futures, it could be another institution to help staff facilitate the creation of that public policy, as opposed to contracting out for their services long-term, but helping us get on the right track. But I would like to just get some feedback. That was just an idea that I had, depending on the cost. Thank you.
Okay. And now we'll come to public comment. So you've listened to all this, and if you have a couple of words to share with us, come on down. Going once, going twice, there you go.
My name's Steve Storman, and I'm a resident of Lompoc. I have so many notes scribbled down, highlighted in that giant mess of a report, and thank you so much for doing that and for finally there being some sort of progress on everything that's going on. It's just been a nightmare for this town for so long. There's still so much that we still need to know, though. We still need to know, you know, we've heard reports of rent being overcharged. We've heard that, you know, that that's one possible reason that these places, that these units could have been out of compliance with their covenants, and I think we need to know for sure. If that means we have to do a forensic audit, maybe that's what it comes down to. Because we're basically looking at, you know, rent was overcharged, there's a lack of maintenance, which we do know, and there were refinancing of loans on non-compliant units, which we do know, and there was a lack of reporting. Then this all adds up to a giant betrayal of public trust. And not just an overarching public trust, but a specific personal trust on behalf of the people who were living in these apartments and the conditions that were described in that report that just got worse and worse and more and more unlivable. In any other situation, there would be some sort of recourse. There would be a judge, there would be a DA that you could talk to. What's, what's the next step here? Because there's something, I mean, we can look at this in two different ways, right? One, one way of looking at this is, yeah, you know, something went bad with one of these properties, or more than one of these properties, and more loans were taken out, things spiraled downhill, the passive voice was used in every sentence, and everybody deflected responsibility. We don't know what happened, there was bad reporting, and we're just going to leave it at that. And the other possibility is to say, you know, there, there may be some opportunity to be able to look the people of Lompoc, especially the tenants of LH CDC, look these people in the eye and say, this is what happened, and this is why it happened, and it won't happen again. And I think for that to happen, you know, it's going to require some sort of, some sort of longer look into what happened and why. And if that's a criminal investigation, so be it. All right. None of my other notes really matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam Wall, Lompoc resident. I had questions. A lot of you, you've asked some of the questions, such as who's monitoring, who's responsible to monitor, why we have covenants. I asked that months ago, never got an answer. Asked what about the overcharging of rents and what's going to be done about that, never got an answer, still happening. As you see, we've got lots of covenants, they're in effect, banks have taken it back, it's gone back to the original property owners. Have we gotten any reports, financial, anything in the last year? Yes. Of course. RDA hits. Okay. I've got to say something about that, because that is really eating at me about Dinah not handling her responsibilities here, and I'm naming names. She has no records here. It came out in the failure of oversight. Banks were foreclosing last September or before. October eighteenth, she goes and speaks in front of the Board of Supervisors and makes a recommendation that another funding goes to LH CDC, and that funding, that particular funding, was a renewal, and it would have bypassed the county, the city, anybody. That money would have gone straight to LH CDC and given them the right to name their Then I find out, after she gives the report to the city on the recommendation at the final hour, you have to make a decision on whether or not we're going to join the urban consortium for another three years. I find out two days later, she's now at the county over everything, over all the housing now. Councilmember Starbuck asked some time ago to find out, we voted to, to join the consortium three to two. It was brought back, should we withdraw from the consortium. We don't have an answer yet. Now, it's not on the agenda until January. We've missed a year. We can only try to get out of the next two years of the current, three years we've agreed to. Does anybody see a problem with this? Conflict of interest anywhere in here? And I am still, I am not giving up on the overcharging of our tenants. And I don't think it's just the people that I have talked to at Casa Contreras. I think it's happened in others. We've got no reports, no financials, a lot of this is Dinah's. We don't know if they were overcharged or not. We got nothing. So game on. Thank you.
Just so you know, the Human Services Commission has voted unanimously to recommend to the council, and we've all received a letter from them to withdraw from the consortium, so that discussion is coming forward.
Joyce Howard, Lompoc Mayor, City Council. I think one of the most disturbing things I heard tonight was when Councilmember Lingo asked the consultant if this was unusual, and we find out that people are screwing up all over. I mean, this is really very concerning to me. I thought it was just our city, but evidently, we're not so unique, and we have people all over. You know, we're really fortunate that we've always had at least one councilperson who, no matter how much people, you know, point fingers, just keeps on asking the questions. We had Jan Keller on the City Council, and I said in this council hall one night, when she said to LH CDC, they came for funding, and she said, until you can give us an accounting, I can't support giving you more money. And LH CDC got up and said, we can't do that, it's too confusing, you wouldn't understand. And that council voted four to one to give them more money. And now we have this city council, and thank God we had Councilmember Martner, who has ridden this one for four years. My gosh. Somewhere, somehow, this has just got to end. And I'd just like to take an opportunity to thank Linda Wirtman, because I think that woman has probably saved this city so much money, and it's the only one that doesn't have this finger of shame pointed at her. You know, I was in Santa Barbara yesterday at a meeting, and there was a discussion, which happens a lot outside of Lompoc, about LH CDC. And people were talking that Santa Barbara Housing Authority had purchased two of the buildings. And it made me think of something. I had a conversation with somebody a few days ago, and they raised the question that whenever somebody rents, you have to pay a security deposit. And that security deposit goes into a separate account, and that account is for repairs and maintenance. And I didn't see anywhere where that came up. Somewhere, there's got to be a pot of money where all those security deposits went into. If anybody has gone by and looked at these properties, you know there hasn't been a cent that's gone into repairs and maintenance, because you have people living in deplorable conditions. So where's all that money? And I haven't seen that or heard that addressed anywhere, and I would really like that question answered. Where is that money? What happened to it? Is there a separate account that we don't know about that's still sitting there? Because I think if you look at all the number of tenants that they've had over the years, there's got to be a serious amount of money there. And then the next question would be, and I don't know, maybe the consultant knows, if they did use that money for something else, is that legal? Can you do that? And I have no idea, but I think it's an interesting question. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to take on that question. I think it seems to me in the documents I saw from Pacific Western and their receiver that they had received security deposits for their tenants. Just trying to think where I saw it. And I don't know about the other ones, but I... Do you remember anything about that?
You mean, once the receiver took over, they started to receive it? Is that what you're asking?
No, I think that, I read somewhere in there that those security deposits were transferred to them, but I'd have to go back and look at now. There's an awful lot of documents.
I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Is I asked that question back when?
Yadiya De Vries. Council, I was going to rise before you to, you know, talk about how it's odd that the refinancing seems to have happened always one year after the noncompliance, and how the average year of noncompliance is, you know, 2006, before subprime mortgage hit, and how all this was odd and strange. But, but I'm tired. And I imagine you all are tired, too. It's late. And not just tired tonight, but tired of this whole thing. This process, sitting at the audience tonight, I realize, has been very frustrating. And it's been frustrating because there are three things that I believe that I, and I think many members of the public, would like to see happen. First, we would like a policy to make sure this doesn't happen in the future, so a policy moving forward. Second, we want to understand what happened in the past. And third, we would like those who are affected by LH CDC to be assisted, to be helped, since, you know, they were our responsibility legally, you know, maybe not in the technical legal sense, but they were our responsibility as a city. And the process that's been in place to take care of these three things, right, we've been trying to cram all three of these into a process that is focused solely on that first one, solely on a policy in the future. And I think that's what's made a lot of the discussions here tonight very convoluted, confusing, you see all the back and forth, because there just isn't a process in place for those second two. And I understand the desire, saying, okay, you know, we'll just sweep all that under the rug, and we'll just create a policy moving forward. But I think a lot, what a lot of the concern is in the public, is that we can't, that what happened, I mean, I appreciate what Urban Futures did, and looking at that, with staff's reports, all that, I think there's a concern in the back of the head, is that while it may be true that what staff's behavior was not particularly exceptional, that the meltdown of LH CDC certainly was, that this meltdown of compliance of all these properties, you know, even if the staff response, you know, was overwhelmed and perhaps undertrained, whatever. And so there's this, I think, a sense that you can try to create a policy moving forward just talking about the staff and how, as though the city somehow was somehow completely separate from what LH CDC was doing. But that's not really the case, now is it? I mean, LH CDC was part of our community, was a central part of our community, and there was a lot more interplay going on there, and there was a lot more going on there than just the city staff getting reports from LH CDC, as though, right, that's happening completely separately. Especially when we start talking about something like the theater, where they start touting this as central to development, and, right, and the council is intimately aware of that, involved with that, that's, you know, put front and center in the community. So we're trying to cram, and then the helping those who were most affected, it isn't even, you know, it doesn't fit into this process at all. And I think we're worried that it's going to get completely left by the wayside. So while I appreciate the process that's in place, and appreciate the work that's been done to craft a policy for the future, it's just inadequate to do what the public wants. And every time I think the public comes up and tries to express that, the response is, "Well, look, you know, this is the process, and we're following this process correctly." And it's like, yes, yes, you are, that first part. But we actually want to talk about a lot more than that. We think that that second part, understanding forensically what happened, is necessary for the policy, and we're very afraid that that third part of helping those is going to get lost completely. So I don't know, I don't think, I'm not even sure that's something you can address tonight, especially not at 11:30, when we're all tired. I think this whole process is, like I said, it's frustrating, and it's made me very tired, and it's made it really hard for me to even figure out what to ask of you right now, because we seem to be shoehorned very narrowly into this one thing that just doesn't address the public's concerns. I hope, you know, that I've helped clarify what those are, because, you know, sometimes I've been wondering whether the council even realizes that that's what's going on, that it's not that we don't think that what's going, right, the process that's in place is good, but that we're trying to get all these other concerns addressed as well through a process that just isn't adequate. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that some of you on this dais are going to understand how hard it is for me to be here tonight and not be able to come up and speak about, because I'm now reporting. So I will, as a reporter, answer a question that I heard a couple of you ask about, why isn't HUD doing something? As you may have seen in the story I wrote about the OIG being here and conducting their audit, I will report to you that I have 16 emails back and forth between the HUD official spokeswoman that confirmed that since the year 2000, HUD has, HUD Los Angeles office, has never requested LH CDC files to review. So there, Ms. Councilmember Martner and Costa, you both were asking about that. They have never asked for an LH CDC file for the home program. The audit that was confirmed to me by HUD occurred in 2004, 2007, 2010, and 2012. When they were here in 2012, earlier this year, LH CDC was specifically excluded, the only cho'd up. However, now, OIG is here, and they are, in fact, asking for all files for a specific period of years. So LH CDC will be looked at, but they were never monitored before. Just I'd answer that question as a journalist.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, I can't implore you more than to take the time to go to the county website, HCD and the CDBG sites, and read the reports that cover the periods in question. A lot of the unanswered questions lie within the documents that are there. Now, whether you agree with them or not is entirely a different story. But it provides loan amounts, where they went, when they went, how much, what properties. It talks about monitoring, it talks about compliance, it goes through the whole gambit of many questions that you just asked. But I think the human services for the city of Lompoc is on the right track, and that Councilmember Martner kept throwing the 2007 date out. And there is a correlation. That's the time in which, it says, "However, in 2007, the county of Santa Barbara and the city of Lompoc entered into a cooperation agreement whereby Lompoc agreed to relinquish its longstanding status as a CDBG entitlement in order for their population to be introduced into the counties. This allowed the county of Santa Barbara to qualify as an urban county eligible to receive community development block grant funds, CDBG, annually. Therefore, as of the 2007 and 2008 program year, the Santa Barbara Urban County Partnership came into an official existence." Okay? So with that, there was funding impacts to different nonprofits. You need to look at that, and you need to look at these CAVERS and CDBG reports and see as, after they joined the consortium, there's two reasons, because some of nonprofits are not eligible to apply directly for certain funds that they were previously allowed to apply for. Also, that pie keeps getting smaller. The funding source continues to be reduced, but we continue to have greater needs. That's part of what this economy has been. And so that pie gets, keeps slicing smaller and smaller and smaller. And you need to look at that. We have a shelter, we have two shelters that are going to go down the same path unless they get the appropriate funding. The pie's not any bigger, and we're not entitled to go directly to the, like we were before, because we're part of the consortium, so we're dependent on the Santa Barbara County decisions. I mean, a bit with your input, but we lack that control. So take a look at those reports, please, and use that to help you go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communication and come back to council for discussion. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. I wanted to address two public comments. Mr. Gonzalez, I did, actually, as we were having that discussion, I looked it up online, and I did look at the 07-08 CAVER, and I read the sentence that you read about the consortium, and I do see some correlation there. I mean, I am confident that the county did complete their compliance reports, or not reports, excuse me, but they looked into the compliance issues. But the one thing that leaves me unsettled that they didn't, that we still have no resolve is in regards to the properties that had funding not associated with the consortium, and they were still out of compliance. So there, for me, is, that's still outstanding, and that's still an issue, you know, and again, whether that, now that falls on HUD for not asking, that falls on the city for not following up, that falls on LH CDC for being out of compliance in the first place, is what it sounds like. And then in regards to another public comment, I do want to say, you know, Mr. De Vries, I think you outlined three important components here, the first of which we are discussing at this exact moment, the second of which is also on the agenda for this evening. There's no way to tell if it's going to go forward or not, but it is something that we are going to address. And third, in the outstanding requests presented by the city administrator, that was actually also addressed as an outstanding request after we received this report tonight. It's up to the mayor and myself, as an ad hoc committee, to create some kind of, at least, some, I forget the type, the way that we, we, ad hoc committee to work with staff to set up public low-income housing workshop, to, in attempt to help those who are affected by this issue. So all three things, we are addressing, perhaps maybe not to the standards in which you were looking for, but I, we go through processes for particular reasons in government. I feel like we're going down the right path. So that said, I wanted to hear what feedback council had in regards to my last suggestion about establishing the policy, but also, I'm wondering if we should take a quick five-minute break, too?
Yeah, let's do that. Let's go for 10. I'll make it 7. We'll go for a shorty. I just like 7. What can I tell you? Find their seat, please. Is there anybody left that hasn't gotten into your bag here? Let me get, let me get one peanut. Okay.
Marilyn, I'd like to move to the meeting.
Extend the meeting.
By 30 minutes.
Extend by, in a second.
I second.
And if we could vote, please, to extend one half hour, 12:30. Okay? Okay, our friends here from Urban Futures have meetings in the city tomorrow, and therefore have to drive home tonight. And if there are no further questions for them, I would like to let them get on the road so they don't fall asleep. I notice they're already hitting the caffeine in preparation. Yeah. Any other questions for them, or any objection to letting them, cutting them loose and sending them down the road? Councilmember Martner.
I would like to extend a great thank you. Thank you, thank you. And the reason why I'm doing that is because of many things. I had a lot of questions in my mind, but today I received an independent, an independent findings, and you were, you were very objective and analytical, and I thank you for that.
I think the takeaway for me was this report reflects, it's UFOs, not UFOs, unbiased and professional analysis, opinions, and conclusions. Anyone object to me turning them loose? Okay, everybody wave goodbye.
Good evening. The OIC documents, we'll get them to you.
Drive safely, wear your seatbelt.
Pleasant balance of your meeting.
Okay, now, Councilmember Costa, you had something you wanted to say.
No, I was the most prepared.
Ah, okay. So I think now it might be a good moment to look back at the recommendations, which were to review the presentation and the report from Urban Futures, discuss any questions about the report, which we have surely done, direct staff to utilize the information from the report to develop a policy that will create greater accountability for organizations that are awarded funding from the city of Lompoc, direct staff to implement an integrated monitoring system that will ensure all housing compliance monitoring is carried out. And I think what Linda talked about was the, perhaps utilizing the system that we currently have to bring in the CDBG properties. And, you know, I would think if we leave the consortium, we probably have some more properties we'll have to bring in. And then authorize the city administrator to execute an amendment to the contract for the consultant services with Urban Futures to increase the compensation by $5150, $3150 for unbudgeted travel. I think we got more than our money's worth from this trip, and $2,000 for the review of the additional two properties that were not in the original scope of work. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. City Administrator, do you, do you feel that Urban Futures could be an additional help in creating and establishing a policy for the city? Or do you feel that with the feedback you've received at this point, and the guidance that they provided, that we should be able to establish a policy in-house that can be implemented?
Well, I think that Urban Futures really provided us a lot of valuable information. I think we do have what we can move forward with to compile a policy. That's my, my assessment. We do have valuable information that we gained from Urban Futures.
I look forward to seeing the draft review, reviewing the draft of the policy. I can hardly speak any longer.
Councilmember Lingo.
City Administrator, if we accept these recommendations and developing the policy, and you just said that we, you have the ability in-house, if we put a date specific of 90 days... days for this policy, would that work for us if we put that into our recommendation, or our, yeah, recommendation?
Ninety days is fair.
Okay, thank you.
I think the staff recommendation is adequate going forward with one addition, and that would, is the discussion we had earlier, that we would acquire hard copies from the county. We've already agreed to do that, so with that in mind, I'd accept a motion to move forward with the recommendations. Councilmember Lingel.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we accept staff recommendations. And point number three with the policy, I'd like us to put in there as a date specific, ninety days for that to come back to us.
Okay. And then a second with that, with that addition.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion at this time? Seeing no lights, could we vote, please? And that passes five-zero. And now, a presentation from our city attorney with regard to an update on the forensic audit question.
Thank you, Mayor. First, just so that we're sure we're all talking about the same thing, because forensic audit has been used on various occasions throughout this process we've been using. I'm going to read a definition that I think accurately reflects what I understand a forensic audit to be, and so it knows that's the context in which I'm working. It's an examination and evaluation of financial information for use as evidence in court.
Can I interrupt you just a moment? Yeah, I know. Item twelve is going to be past our, no, it's not you, our cutoff time, and Beth, who is in dire agony with a toothache, sitting in the back waiting to come and talk to us, could go home if we wanted to table item twelve. And this was, was an item that was Councilmember Martner's item. Councilmember Martner, are you okay tabling this item?
Yes.
Okay. And I would need consent from two other council members to feel good about it. Everybody good with that? Okay, so we have five. Somebody run back and tell Beth to go home.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, under Robert's rules, if you say table, and it doesn't come back at the next meeting, it's dead. That's not what you intended, right?
For it to come back at the next meeting.
At the next meeting, the very next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just to make sure that technically that's what table means.
Yes. Continue to the next meeting. Everyone understands that this is being moved to the next meeting, correct? Everybody nod your head up and down.
Mr. Mayor, as I understand, the next meeting will have two parts, correct? Because I think it will be the swearing-in of the new council members. So the discussion is, should it have, should it happen before or after the swearing-in of the new council members?
Generally, it would happen after.
Well, I don't, I don't know why generally. I never, I never heard of this before. I'm okay that it happens after, but please don't say generally. That's, that's really totally inaccurate. Yes, I'm okay with having the new council discuss the city administrator's job description because I think it is the duty of the new council. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me rephrase. Having come to two of those first council meetings, the only action that the old council took at the two meetings that I came to in two thousand eight and two thousand ten was to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. So my, my experience is limited to those two. I'm sorry, Joe, if you want to start from the beginning, we're all a little punch drunk, so.
Sure. I was starting with just reading the definition that I'm using for forensic audit, so we all have the same context. And I'll repeat, it's an examination and evaluation of financial information for use as evidence in court. A forensic audit can be conducted in order to prosecute a party for fraud, embezzlement, or other financial claims. In addition, an audit may be conducted to determine negligence. The reason I felt it was important to say that is because it'll put context, I think, in the rest of the report that I'm going to be giving. First, I'd like to also address the fact of the status of a forensic audit as to the LHCDC. As of this date, no forensic audit has been started, commenced by anybody, by the county, or by the city, or by HUD, as far as I know. That may change, but as of today, no forensic audit has started. Basically, the reason that hasn't happened is because the county's furthest along in trying to gather information about, and let me step back a second, too, and the auditing that would be occurring is not auditing of the city's records, or auditing of the county's records, or auditing of HUD's records, it's auditing of LHCDC's records. That's what the forensic audit would focus on, is what does LHCDC's records show. Unfortunately, as I said, the county is furthest along in trying to get it started. They haven't been able to get enough information from LHCDC to have enough information even be able to decide whether they can even do a forensic audit on the information they have. They've had to go so far as to ask the county DA to actually get a search warrant to be able to gather more information, because they didn't have enough information. As of today, the search warrants have all been served, but all of the information hasn't yet come in as a result of the search warrants, nor has it been all identified and categorized. The next step will be for that information to go to the county auditor's office, from the DA's office, to, for them to determine whether or not there's enough information to be able to go forward to the forensic audit. The costs, now, the county has also indicated to me, and I think I've even seen it in a newspaper article, that they aren't sure that they have staff on board to be able to do a forensic audit, because it's such a different process than what a typical auditor would be doing. So they may need to hire out themselves. The cost of doing a forensic audit is, is not inexpensive. I understand that there's, that sometimes decisions are made because there's other things that are served by expending money, but I think it's important for me to at least explain to you my understanding of what it could potentially cost. In talking to some auditors, there's a range of about five thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars for each audit. What, what each audit means, or what, how we define whether it's going to be five thousand or twenty-five thousand dollars depends on what information is available, how much information is available, how detailed they're going to have to get digging down to find information. In addition, it's unclear to me right now what, what, what we'd want to be auditing, what, what files of LHCDC would we want to be auditing, or would the council want to have a forensic audit on? Is it the eleven, is it only the eleven parcels that, if you recall, in December of, of last year, we submitted a chart that indicated the eleven properties that the city may have some liability on for, to repay CDBG? Is it those eleven parcels? Is it the twenty-seven projects that LHCDC worked on? Or is it the forty-four properties that LHCDC owned at some point? And do all of the files related to those properties? So using the five thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollar range, that could be, and using the forty-four to twenty-seven parcels, that could be a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to a million, one hundred dollars, a hundred thousand dollars. So I know that range is really broad, but that's sort of the figure that you need to consider what you want to have done, and if you want to have it done. Let's assuming that, or I guess before you decide whether you want to go forward, what, what's the purpose that you would want to try to achieve with a forensic audit? I see three purposes, maybe there's some other purposes, but I see three. One audit is to figure out how much money the LHCDC, LHCDC was loaned from the city or the successor agency. That we don't need, because that you actually now have. We had that documentation already, that's in our files, and now you have a report that shows that, so we don't need a forensic, forensic audit for that. If the forensic audit is to try to figure out whether there was some fraud or negligence by individual persons, not by the corporation itself, because we know LHCDC is basically defunct, so if it's to try to find the, the people who may have been responsible if there was any fraud or, or negligence, to be able to recover from them the money that may be lost because loans weren't repaid, two things to think about there. One is, if it's success, if it's the loans the successor agency gave that weren't repaid, and you get the money back, you're not going to keep the money anyway, it's going to go back to the county. Some you'll get at the city, but it's going to go back to the county. The other thing is, you want to consider, are the people who may be liable judgment-proof, meaning they don't have much money, so you won't be able to get money from them even if they're found guilty by a court? And it's not going to be, I guess, the, it's not just guilt by association. It can't just be, they were board members, and so therefore, because LHCDC had things happen very, that went very bad, unless some very criminal intent can be shown on each of the individual people who are trying to seek recovery from, unless that can be proved, you're not going to be able to recover any money from those individuals, just because they happen to have been board members of LHCDC. And if another option, or another use of the forensic audit, is to see whether or not there's criminal activity that should be prosecuted, I would suggest to you that that's really not something that the city should be spending its time on. That's why we have a DA's office, and as I said, they're already in the process. The reason they're in the process is because when the county auditor started doing their work, they had some concerns about what they were looking at. They went to the DA saying, we're not really sure if there's a problem here, but could you look at this stuff and let us know whether you think there's actions that you should be taking? And so the county DA started looking at the stuff. One of the reasons they went for a search warrant is because they didn't have enough information to make that determination. They have not made any determination that anyone's done anything that they think could create criminal liability, but my point is, it's really the DA's office that should be involved in doing that, not something that the city should spend its resources on trying to do. So I guess in a nutshell, you need to weigh the, the purposes that you want, or figure out the purposes you want to serve by the forensic audit, figure out whether or not there's a likelihood that that purpose will be served. And I understand that it's not going to be an easy decision, because there's a lot of understandable interest in what has happened involving LHCDC and, and public money that's been involved, and the, and the human beings who have been affected by what's been going on. So you're going to have to judge whether, how much you want to spend, whether you want to, whether spending it is worth the, the options that you have. So my recommendation is, don't do a friend, my, my suggestion is, don't do the forensic audit, because the purposes that are to be served by it, the one that may be best served would be whether or not there's criminal liability. I just don't think that's something that the city should take on the process of doing. With that, I answer questions, if I can.
Councilmember Lingel.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Benoni, is, what's the statute of limitations on this? If we want to wait?
If the, if the crime, we're talking about a criminal statute.
Correct, yes.
If the crime is embezzlement of public funds, which is what this crime would be, because embezzlement doesn't mean, doesn't only mean someone took public money and went to Costa Rica with it. It means they used public money for a purpose other than what they were given the public money for. That could be, if the public money was, was given to build, building X, and instead of building, building X with it, they paid some other debt they owed, that could be embezzlement. That's not what the facts show so far, that we, when we audited our own files, you can see that either money was used to buy property, and that money was put into escrow. So it wasn't LHCDC getting the money and being able to do something, it went into escrow to buy property. If it was to refinance things, the money went back to the city or the agency. If it was to do rehab, the process the city and the agency had was, they didn't just issue checks, they would get invoices, including invoices that showed sometimes checks paid to people who wrote the invoices, or actual invoices, and the checks would be cut for those invoices. So I'm, I'm guessing there won't be that kind of evidence, but maybe there will be. The stat, there is no statute of limitations on public fraud. There can't be. I mean, the law's set up that there can't be, because otherwise, people could get away with stuff that shouldn't be.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Martner.
Mr. Mayor, could you give us the name of the staff member that you are speaking of at the county regarding the update that you have received?
One of the deputy county councils, deputy county auditor, Heather Fletcher.
So Ms. Fletcher told you that there is no forensic audit being conducted by the county, as we know right now, that there has been records that have been collected, but...
Both the deputy DA and that deputy county auditor told me that.
And as of today?
As of Wednesday or Thursday of last week.
Okay, so, so you heard from somebody, okay, there is conflicting information that I have received, and so it needs some clarification.
I, I would need to know what the conflicting information is, and your source of the information for me to be able to...
Well, there is...
...I mean, to discuss it.
And I forget the date. There was a public meeting in the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors directed the staff to go ahead with a forensic audit, and to appropriate the necessary staff for the audit, and I mean, that's in the public record. So there has been an authorization made by the Board of Supervisors to provide the necessary staff to conduct a forensic audit.
Technically, the, the motion wasn't direction. The motion was, not the word suggests, I don't remember the exact word, but it actually wasn't direct, because the county auditor couldn't be directed by the county board. So whatever the language was, it wasn't direct. But the county auditor started the process, and they're trying to gather the information that they're, the, I guess, what is, what does starting the forensic audit process mean? If, if beginning to gather information in order to determine whether or not there's enough information to be able to actually do a forensic audit, is, already started the forensic audit, then the county has already started the forensic audit. I wasn't interpreting start the forensic audit that way. I was interpreting it meaning, meaning there's, the, the information is gathered, and now they're actually doing the auditing of the information.
I understand that is that Mr. Guiz, who is in charge, he's in the controller's office, has says, we are making progress and the audit is underway. So, so here is an elected official that has made that public statement, and you're saying that that's not what's going on?
No, I'm saying, the, as my understanding of, my use of the term commencing a forensic audit, to me, the audit doesn't start until you have all the information that you can actually start reviewing to be able to do the audit. It's not gathering, it doesn't start, in my head, when you, when you're gathering information to decide whether or not you have enough information to do the forensic audit. So it, it could be my misunderstanding of, or misuse of the word commencing forensic audit.
It's a good idea to clarify it, I believe, you know, just, there is a perception that the county is conducting this, there is an elected official saying that we're making progress, we have our legal counsel here saying there is not much going on at the council, as this staff report says, there may not be resources, there may not be any records to search, so, so I'm a little confused. Again, I, I would like to really know what the facts are. Where are we at the county level? And yes, you cannot answer them, you are just interpreting what you've received, and you are providing that interpretation. you are providing that interpretation to us here tonight. That, you know, that to me is, it's difficult, again, to make a decision based on an interpretation. I really would like to know whether the county is conducting a forensic audit, and I don't know an answer about that.
How do you define commencing a forensic audit?
All of it. Assigning staff, assigning staff. Your job is to look at these records, to seize the records, get it going. It's really simple.
If, if...
It actually started when the Board of, it started when the Board of Supervisors voted. That's when it started, because they are the decision-makers, and they decide, and they voted that a forensic audit will be done, so...
Okay, let me, let me see if I can sort this out, so it makes sense to me. So I think what I'm hearing said is that the DA could not determine with the information that they had if there was a crime. And so they issued search warrants to get more information to begin that determination, and that information that's been gathered, or in, and perhaps is still being gathered, is then being given to the county auditor, and his responsibility will be to determine if in fact he has enough information to do the audit. And then, once they find, determine if they have enough information to do the audit, then the DA will make a decision to go forward, because they're the ones driving the process. Is that a fair summary?
No, I, I wouldn't say the DA is, from the information I have, I wouldn't say the DA is the one driving whether or not to do a forensic audit. I would say that that motion that the county board made, asking the auditor to do the forensic audit, is what started the forensic audit ball-rolling.
Okay.
When they started down that line, they started, they asked LHCDC, they started gathering documents from LHCDC and records from LHCDC. When they started looking at those documents, they weren't very complete. They, they tried to get more information from LHCDC. LHCDC has told them, "We gave you everything we have." They still didn't have everything they felt they needed. They went to the DA and said, "Could you help us? We think we have a possible problem, a significant problem here, can you help us?" The DA looked at it and said, "Sure, we can help you, because there's at least a reasonable possibility that there's some crime, so we can get a search warrant." So they got 12 search warrants. They're get, the DA, because the search warrants were issued by the DA, the information that the search warrants resulted in, went to the DA's office for the DA to look at, categorize. The last conversation I had, which was, the actual conversation I had was more than two weeks ago, that organization was still not done. Then, I got an email, maybe a week ago, saying it was still not done. Then what will happen is that information will go from the DA to the county auditor, and they'll look at it. I'm sure they'll have someone come in and see whether they have enough information to be able to do an actual forensic, to complete the forensic audit that was started with the Board of Supervisors saying, "Do what?"
In other words, they'll, they'll begin actually crunching numbers at that point. Okay.
I don't know about crunch, they'll be looking at all the files.
Yeah, assembling a picture of the whole thing, and having some experience with a forensic audit, I know what it takes. Okay, so it seems to me at this juncture, that from my perspective, I'm not willing to go off and spend any money on the hopes that the county will spend the money on instead, and I think this is something we need to keep track of, and have it come back at a date certain for the next review. But before we do that, we need to have public comment. Come on down.
Still, you did have a breeze. Okay, I'm tired, it's late, it's past midnight, so I'll try to be quick. I appreciate that the city attorney brought, you know, the clear legal definition of a forensic audit. I'm a little bit confused why the city attorney is going out and getting, you know, prices for an audit, that seems like it would be something that staff would do, not an attorney. But more than that, when it comes to this whole issue, and I appreciate though that we do have a price range now for what us doing an audit would cost. However, I believe that the agenda item was to both have what it would cost for us to do our own audit, as well as whether it would be possible to join the county's audit. Because while it is true that the county is in this process, their motion, as I understood it, as an understanding that I received from, I believe actually words from the mayor, but definitely from this day is, was that the county's audit was only to figure out what happened with county money, and that the, one of the ideas behind this agenda request was to see was whether we could expand that audit, perhaps by kicking in a little bit to their work, to include city money. So that, you know, it's not the case that we can just rely on the county, that that's sort of been the problem to a large extent. And, I mean, and with the DA and the county, or it is true, the county, as the attorney said, it's the county's motion that is driving this, and the county turned to the DA, and I actually at one point had spoken with the chief deputy director DA for North County, or whatever their official title is, when there was the initial concern that the county wouldn't, had, you know, sort of did their initial review and said there wasn't enough, and that the DA said, "Oh, no, no, we're going to help them with what they're doing." But the DA was also fairly clear that they were not going to drive it, because they don't have the staff, as opposed to the county auditor, which did. So they were going to let that process take place, and they were going to, you know, assist in whatever they could with the county's process. But our problem here, and the reason this was here before you, was that the county's audit was only for county money, and the question was, do we need to do our own to take care of city money, or can we join them to get city money, or do we just not care? Which is, I understand, an option, but I feel like we somehow missed what the actual purpose of this agenda item was. Thanks.
Thank you. Steve Stormin, resident of Long Poak.
Yeah, you know, by all means, go ahead, put this off, for more information. Just like, happens over and over again. Oh, we can't go and look for information, because we need more information. It was, what, 2005 that we first started knowing that something was up with LHCDC? That's what it said in that report. 2005 were the first clues. 2006, you know, they go out of compliance. 2007, they're further out of compliance. 2008, 2010, it just keeps stacking up. The problem continues, and we sit around with our heads up our behinds, because we think we need more information to know if we need more information. Just get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
In response to your description of a forensic audit, and the use of public funds, or other than what they were given and intended, there's $50,000 that was given to LHCDC to get their finances in order. They didn't obviously use the $50,000 to do that. That would be just one example. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Closing all communication, and come back for discussion. Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is perhaps one agenda item that I ever experienced, it's dead on arrival. I mean, this is, was so dead on arrival with this report. It's interesting to see, when I read this report, I found it that it had a tone of being non-cooperative, it had a tone of perhaps being a little offensive, and I'll give you one example, the word clamor was used. It was not until the most recent events regarding LHCDC, there has been a concerted clamor to obtain that information. I looked up the definition of clamor in the dictionary, and the definition of clamor is a loud and confused noise, that of people shouting. So we're saying that the concern that this community has over LHCDC is a loud, confusing noise. We're saying that when a council member asks about LHCDC's financial issues, it's noise. I find that offensive. I also find discouraging, and the way that I would have approached this problem, I mean, granted, it's a lot of money. I think the public comment was right on the money by saying that the purpose of this was to figure out that if we want to find out about the monies that this city gave to LHCDC, we needed to know how much it would cost to do a forensic audit, or could we join forces with the county? I asked that question many times, I still don't have an answer. I don't know whether the county is willing to join forces with us, whether the county would like to include us on that. I don't have an answer for that, but I have asked that question. I also would like to tell this council that if, if I was a member of this city staff that has this issue in front of them, I would go out of my way to say, "We will cooperate. We will cooperate with everything we have to assist whoever may be, whether it's the council, I mean, whether it's the county, whether it's the DA office. Yes, we cannot, and we do not have the means to conduct a forensic audit ourselves, because it's too much money, we don't want to spend that money." But wouldn't we just go a little extra step and say, "We will give you everything we have, and we will assist you if you need information from us?" I would put that like in big letters in this report. And you know why? Because the public is concerned. The public has a tremendous distrust in the government, and this issue continues to generate and create a distrust even further. So why don't we look at this and go, "We will cooperate with whoever may do anything to try to find out what goes on." And I would encourage and plead with this council, would you please, council, send a letter to the county, to the DA, "We will assist you with all our records, we would do anything we can." We're not going to give them money, because it's clear that the writing is on the wall. We're not going to give them money. Our legal counsel is saying, "Don't, it doesn't make sense." Could we at least say, "But we will cooperate with information?" I would really recommend that this city council directs the staff to write a letter to the county and to the DA to say, "We will assist you with any information we have to help you conduct any, any investigation that you may conduct." We are here, we have an open book, we have all the records, or the lack of records, as we just learned, but here they are. And if that's going to take enough, you know, if that's going to take extra time for the staff to make those serox coffee, I'm willing to volunteer myself, and make the copies, and give them to the DA, give them to the county, give them to every employee that is dealing with this issue, because I would like to walk away from here, trying to reestablish at least a little tiny bit of public trust.
Marilyn, motion to extend the meeting 10 minutes.
Yeah, okay.
We're like a minute away, so...
And a second.
One second.
We have 11 minutes and counting.
I believe with regard to that, that we have already given the DA or the county auditor access to the document package that we prepared for Urban Futures, seems to me, and we offer that up to them once already. Anybody remember?
We've been working with Heather Fletcher on documentation that they have requested. It didn't include the entire packet, but what they specifically requested.
Okay, and to Councilmember Martner's statement, could we just extend to them the fact, and give them the password to that document package?
Marilyn, I'd also suggest that when Urban Futures presents the final report, we submit that to the county as well.
Yes, absolutely. Councilmember Smith.
Well, I was going to recommend that Councilmember Martner put that into a motion on behalf to second it, that we send a letter to the county, offering our assistance with all documentation that we have, all documentation that we can assist with them. And I agree that we're probably not going to be able, we cannot afford to do an audit by ourselves, but we can certainly assist, providing information that we have already. We have a lot of information, so, Councilmember Martner, if you'd like to put that into a motion, I'll gladly second your motion.
I would like to make the motion that we write a letter, and I would like to have the city, every single council member to review the content of the letter, and send it to the corresponding agencies at the county level, city, I mean, county government and DA office, where we are extending our support, assistance, and documentation that would help them in any investigation and forensic audit they may be conducting. I also like to make in the motion that I would request that the word clamor gets taken out of the report.
I'll go ahead and second that, even the clamor part.
Mr. Mayor, I hate to bring it up, but if the council, if more than, if a quorum of council members are going to review this letter and make changes to the letter, we need to do that in a public meeting.
I waive the right to review the letter.
I also waive it.
I'll waive it.
Okay, we're down to two council members. I got, I think I understand the motion. City clerk, are you good with the motion? Okay. Is there any further discussion on this? And you know what? I'm not quite happy. I really would like, a little ways up the road, to, to get a report back on how the county's proceeding with this, because I don't want it to just send a letter and be done with it, I want to know where things are going forward, and I think the public does too. So if the maker and the second would be comfortable with adding a report back in January on the county's progress.
Now that you mention it, I think another thing that needs to be added is a formal response from the county as to whether the city could join forces with them in the forensic audit. Never got an official response from the county.
I don't think we could mandate that, I think we could ask them, is that, is that your intent?
Well, I have asked to ask, and nothing has happened, so maybe we need to ask again.
Probably, from my standpoint, and it would be up to the second of the motion, but I probably wouldn't go down that road until I had an idea of what it was they were going to do, and what it was going to cover, and what it was going to cost. But it's up to the, to the second.
Run the whole motion by me again here.
We usually make the maker do that, we're going to pick on you.
A letter to be drafted and sent to the county, and DA office extending support, assistance, assistance, documentation in their forensic audit. Councilmember Costa, Councilmember Lingle, and Councilmember Starbuck all waived the right to read the letter. It will be read and reviewed by Councilmember Martner and Mayor Lynn. This will also include a report to be returned to council for review in January 2013.
That's what I seconded.
And the word clamor to be removed from Joe, Joe Pinone's staff... And the word clamor to be removed from Joe, Joe Panoni's staff report. Does it need to be included in the motion that the Urban Futures final report will be sent as well?
Yeah, I think it's all information.
Okay.
I've got it in my notes, so I'll make sure.
Just wanted to come on here, thank you.
Okay. Good with that?
I still would like to ask, you know, we have already directed the staff to ask the county whether we could join forces, and we have not received an answer for that, so why are we now turning and saying that's irrelevant?
Didn't say it was irrelevant, just, this wasn't the time, I would choose to do it, I would rather wait until we get some information back from them and then...
But then we go back to this, like, we need information, you know, I'm sorry.
Perhaps it can be written in the letter that we, if at all possible, we would like to be involved or included with Lumpoak's financial documentation.
Terrific idea. Part of the letter should say that this council would ask the county, if at all possible, to be included.
I'll second that.
We're not committing to any money until it comes back to us, that's the point, correct? We all understand that, right? Okay. That's my concern with that. Okay, in that case, if we all understand that we're not committing to funding it at this time, then I'm, I'm happy with it. Everybody understands that, right? Okay. Any other discussion? And could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0, thank you. Okay. And item 12 was table to the next meeting, and now we have oral communications, last two minutes for anyone to address us. Go on once, go on twice, come on down.
Sorry, Yedidah De Vries, hate to nag, I just have two questions for clarification. Was I wrong in understanding that the council's audit, that, sorry, the county's motion, the direction to the county auditor and what the county auditor was doing was only to follow county money? Am I wrong in that understanding? Because that is what has been said before in this hall, and I believe by the county. My second question is, was I wrong in understanding that the purpose of the agenda item tonight was to ask the county whether we, that was specifically part of the agenda, agendized item, as requested and as approved, was to ask the county whether we could join them? And if so, why was that not addressed at this agenda item, if that was specifically part, part of the agenda request? Sorry, was that my question not clear, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead and finish, and then I'll...
Well, I mean, I'm finished, I'm just, you were making a face, although I wasn't making clear.
No, I think we got that in, in the motion in the last round of discussion, was we asked that question of the county.
But am I not correct in understanding that the request, the agenda, the request to agendize, the request to put this item on the agenda that was originally made, included that question specifically? Am I wrong in that understanding? And if I'm not wrong in that understanding, why are we having to ask it again, and why was it not addressed tonight?
I would have to go back and look at the minutes, I honestly couldn't tell you.
Okay. And could you also answer my first question, about whether, was I wrong in understanding that the county's supervisors' request and what the county auditor is doing is only to follow county money?
That wasn't my impression, but now that you've asked the question, I'm not sure enough in the answer that I would tell you categorically that they're going to look at everything. I don't think...
Because that was the impression that I got from you in the past.
Yeah, I don't think, in view of what they got with search warrants, that that was their intent, because their search warrants were very broad.
Okay.
I'm not sure you could separate the issues, I guess is what I'm saying, because if you look at a lot of the properties, they're city money, there's, you know, there's, you know, I don't...
Mr. Mayor, I believe our letter requesting to assist them should, it should, in my mind, it clarifies that we want to be involved in it as well. I mean, I'm hoping that they get that impression.
I think they'll get the picture. Councilor Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You are correct, the, this agenda item was supposed to have a response from the county, whether we could join forces or not. You are also correct, the forensic audit that the county is conducting is only regarding county funds, not city funds.
Okay. Any other oral communication? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communication. We have four minutes for reports. I attended a number of meetings, none of which were at city expense. Next.
I spent no city money.
I didn't spend any city money.
And he's a vegetarian.
Ditto.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, that will be the end, we will be, Lumpoak City Council will adjourn to a regular meeting at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, December 4th, 2012, unless we have a closed session.